Good afternoon, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the last city council meeting of the year for December 17th, 2013. We will start our meeting as usual with an invocation. Today, we're pleased to have Pastor Ed Snyder from the East Valley Pentecostal Church to join us. We'll give today's invocation. East Valley provides many community programs such as giving food to those in need on a monthly basis, working with our mayor's gang prevention task force, providing ex-offenders with court-ordered classes and substance abuse, anger management, parenting skills, and much, much more in the community in Evergreen. So Pastor Snyder, thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for the honor and the privilege to be here today to do this invocation. On behalf of myself and our congregation, I want to thank the City Council for this year's hard work and tough decisions as they have been presented. There's a quote that comes to mind that what is right is not always popular, and what is popular is not always right. It's important that we do the right thing. And so today, if I can ask you to bow your heads with me and let's pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. In this season of the holidays and Christmas, we want to remember your birth here on earth. I pray, God, that as we go through the season of joy in today's session, that you would bless this council with your wisdom and your direction as you have invoked the responsibility and the welfare of the citizens of San Jose. God, that you will help us make those right decisions. They may be tough, but God, I pray that you will give us that wisdom to do what is right. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Snyder. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item of business would be the orders of the day. We have a staff recommendation to defer item 3.3 to January 28th and item 3.5 to January 14th. Are there any other changes from the printed agenda? Councilmember Constant.
On the living wage item, I'd prefer that we have a discussion about deferral at the time of the item.
Okay, Councilmember Liccardo.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was actually pulling items off consent.
Okay, I'll come back to you when we do that. Okay, so we have an objection to that. We will not defer it under orders of the day. We'll just deal with it in the agenda order. Any other changes from the printed agenda? Motion is to approve orders of the day. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. So 3.5 was deferred. As noted in the orders of the day, we're adjourning in memory of Royce Lorraine Peterson. He was an educator at Campbell Union High School District for 38 years, after retirement served on the Campbell Union High School District Board. And Councilmember Rocha, have some more to say.
No, Mayor, I was just going to read the adjournment language into the record, but I did want to say, I don't know if anyone from her family's here. We did reach out to them, and if they are, you have our condolences. Thank you, Mayor.
Closed session report would be the next item.
Mayor, we have one item to report out, and that is, we've been given authority to file an amicus brief in the case of State Department of Finance versus Commission on State Mandate. It involves the County of Los Angeles, who would be on behalf of the County of Los Angeles, and it deals with a state, unfunded state mandate issue. The vote was 10-1 with Councilmember Constant voting no.
We'll now take up the ceremonial items. I'd like to start by inviting Councilmember Herrera to join me at the podium as we present a commendation to the New Leaf Community Markets, becoming the first Californian grocer to achieve a B Corporation certificate. Councilmember Herrera, I think is going to give us the details.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to welcome Eric Conley, New Leaf Community Market Store Manager, and Juan Gardler Sortis, New Leaf Community Market Assistant Store Manager. It's my pleasure to recognize and commend New Leaf Community Markets for becoming the first grocer in California to achieve B Corporation certification. And I would like to acknowledge these hard-working individuals from the manager in New Leaf Community Markets in Evergreen who came today to accept this well-deserved commendation. New Leaf Community Markets is a locally-owned natural grocery store on the central coast of California. It's been serving the community for 28 years. Founded in 1985, New Leaf's mission to nourish and sustain our community is reflected in the 10% of profits given annually to support local nonprofits working to improve the quality of life. New Leaf is committed to offering customers choice that have the most beneficial impact on their health and the health of the environment. Helping customers make informed decisions is an integral part of their commitment. Receiving a B Corporation certification is a highly awarded achievement. Certified B corporations are leading a global movement to redefine success in business. By voluntary meeting higher standards of transparency, accountability, and performance, certified B corps are distinguishing themselves in a cluttered marketplace by offering a positive vision of a better way to do business, sort of do well and do good, right? In order to be recognized as a B corp, New Leaf Community Markets had to meet rigorous standards of social and environmental performance, accountability, and transparency. B corps are legally required to consider the impact of their decisions, not only on their shareholders, but also on their stakeholders such as employees, suppliers, community, consumers, and the environment. All B corps strive to be the best in the world. They set the bar for businesses seeking to have a positive social and environmental impact, scoring 25% higher than nearly 2,000 other sustainable businesses on the B Impact Assessment. New Leaf is the first grocer in California to achieve this certification, and only one of two grocers in the world to do so. The people employed by New Leaf Community Markets are dedicated, productive team of individuals who know that the products they sell and the service they offer make New Leaf the best choice for grocery shopping in their community. New Leaf Community Markets came to the Evergreen area in February 2012, and since then, the New Leaf Community Market has been involved with the various Evergreen schools, neighborhood groups, organizations, and the entire community, supporting local events and causes. On behalf of the Evergreen community, the state, and the country, I would like to congratulate New Leaf Community Markets on achieving B Corp certification. And now I would like to invite Eric Conley to say a few words after the mayor presents him with a commendation.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Very good. (APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera, Mayor Reed, and the San Jose City Council. New Leaf Community Markets is proud to be recognized as the first Californian grocer retailer to achieve this distinction, and it signifies what we've always wanted New Leaf Community Markets to represent. That is, in being a business of more than just making a profit, for us, supporting the community, the people who work in our company, and the betterment of our planet is our business. When New Leaf Community Markets moved to the Evergreen community, it gave me an opportunity to return to my roots. My family moved to San Jose in 1966, and it shall always be my hometown. Thank you very much for giving Juan Carlos and myself the honor of accepting this award in your presence. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Councilmember Campos to join me at the podium as we present a commendation to Nvidia for bringing Project Inspire to Ocala Middle School. Councilmember Herrera is going to join us. And Councilmember Campos is going to have the details of this.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. In 2001, the co-founders of Nvidia decided that the money that the company spent on a holiday party should instead be put back into the community as an Nvidia community service project called Project Inspire. Each year, employees and their families volunteer to work side-by-side with community members to transform a chosen site that it can better serve the community. Over the years, Project Inspire has helped the East Palo Alto Charter School, San Jose's McKinley Elementary School, and Veggie Lucian Cooperative Farm. This year, Project Inspire also served as an inspiration to create a public-private partnership that would not only put a new brighter coat of paint on the buildings at Ocala, but also redo the softball fields and sports courts so that the children could have four new softball fields in their eastside neighborhood. Through this extensive public-private partnership, students at Ocala will be offered extra academics, sports, and life skills support. This is particularly important, given that Ocala families have significant daily issues that they deal with, as do the children. Therefore, we are here today not only to recognize Nvidia's Project Inspire for its wonderful community work and for taking the lead on community involvement by corporations, but we are also here today to recognize them for their collaborative work that created this public-private partnership with the City of San Jose, including my office, Councilmember Herrera's office, our Parks Department, City Year, and the Alum Rock School District. Because of these partnerships, this project brought close to $1 million in resources and materials to Ocala Middle School. Project Inspire has truly lived up to its name, and on behalf of the City of San Jose, I would like to thank Nvidia for being such great community partners. On a more personal note, you know, they talk about timing being everything, and it's an interesting story how this project came about. Last year around this time, John Trejo, the president of the girls' softball league, he had a table at Sports Chalet raising funds for the league. He approached me and said, hey, we got to do something about these softball fields. We can do better for our girls. I agreed and, you know, said, hey, you know what? Let us work on it. Just like clockwork, two to three weeks later, I get a call from Tony, hey, do you have any other projects? And just like that, this project started developing, and now we have the finished product, four brand-new softball fields, the school's completely repainted, the blacktop is retard and restriped, kids are in a new school, and most of all, over the course of a weekend, we were able to tell these kids from the City of San Jose that you were important enough for us to do this project for you. So with that, Mayor, can you please present the commendation to Tony Hanson from Nvidia?
I think they call that being in the right place at the right time. I didn't know that story about John. That's great. Hi, everyone, I'm Tony Hanson from Nvidia, and on behalf of the Nvidia employees throughout the world, which Project Inspire is a very important part of the culture of our company, we are very honored to receive this commendation. We have been working in San Jose for several years. As Javier said, this is our fifth year, and this year was a wonderful opportunity to participate in this public-private partnership, which we'd been hearing so much about but did not have much experience in. And from the beginning, it was pretty clear that this was a very special opportunity for us. Javier's staff has been amazing, specifically want to recognize Nicole and Karina. They've, from the beginning, they've had the vision for what they wanted to do in this space, and every obstacle, and there are obstacles to getting these things done, every obstacle that came up, there was always a solution that came up right away that just further enhanced and improved the project. We also had an amazing partnership with the Parks Department. I see Julie and Matt up there. I'm sure there's some other folks as well. Thank you so much for that. We've been working with you for several years as well, and we hope that by this work, we can encourage more companies to participate in this because it needs to be a partnership, and together we can all really help improve the community. So, thank you very much.
We have one more item I want to do this afternoon on the ceremonials, and to do that, I'd like to invite our city manager, Deborah Fagoni, to join me. As I mentioned, this is the last council meeting of the year. It's also the last council meeting of Deb Fagoni's career. So Deb, could you come on down? I'd like council colleagues to join me. Come on down, the whole council. Deb has been sitting through council meeting every Tuesday for six and a half years, but her career spans 44 years, most of which was spent in San Jose, some of which in our friendly town of La Cada. And we're very proud that she came back to San Jose from La Cada. She's given us a tremendous effort here in the city of San Jose. She was born and raised in San Jose. Local girl does good, I think, is the way it was, because she was a girl here. I think you were still pretty young when you started as a recreation supervisor, recreation aide.
Part-time.
Part-time. So, I'm pretty sure that's way down at the bottom of the job classification, so she's gone from the bottom to the top and done practically every job in between. So today, we want to present, as has been our tradition, a gift that'll go to our public library partners in reading program, and this is a gift of books. Each council member has their favorite book, so you have a gift bag of books, and we won't read them today, but they're kids' books, by the way, and we want to present that to you to present to our library system, and as just a small token of our thanks for your dedication and service, Deb.
Thank you, Mayor. (APPLAUSE).
Council, my bosses, and all of you, my colleagues in the community that I've served for 44 years. It's been a labor of love. I never thought that I would end up in this type of position. I never really aspired to keep climbing, but just continued to find that I loved serving my hometown in every capacity that I've served. And quite frankly, the City of San Jose offered me and many other young people just tremendous opportunities to grow and to explore and to give back, and so I just kept doing that, always being fulfilled, no matter what I did. And so I do feel very accomplished leaving at this stage of my life. Forty-four years is a long time. I know that at 61, this is not a dress rehearsal, and so do feel that personally, it's the right time, and I think professionally, it's the right time for transition so that we don't miss a beat in this organization as the form of governance moves on to a new mayor in about a year. So, thank you for every opportunity you've given me, and you have truly enriched my life more than you will ever know. Thank you very much.
Before we do that, Councilmember Liccardo wants to say a few things.
Thank you, Mayor. I suspect a couple colleagues may want to join in. I just wanted to thank Deb. This has been an extraordinary time in so many ways, and it's often the case that members of the public may not appreciate leadership during times of crisis quite as much as the history books do, but I think when the books are written, it will be recognized that we had the finest city manager in the country, and I'm very grateful for Deb's leadership here, and I'm grateful not just for her service, but for being a great role model for leadership for all of us. Thank you, Deb.
Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Councilmember Liccardo, for leading off. I'm glad we have this moment in public that I get a chance to say how much I've really appreciated Deb Fagoni's work here in the city and her leadership. She's definitely not only been a great leader for the city, but a role model for me as I joined city council. She's done an incredible job over her tenure, and not in a loud way, in a quiet, strong way, she has led this city, and she's helped us get through some of the toughest crises any city's ever seen. She's done it with grace, she's done it with empathy for everyone, including the community, our employees, and the council, and we couldn't have gotten through this without her, and she will greatly be missed, but hopefully, we will still have friendship and be able to see Deb once in a while. But you richly earned your retirement, Deb. Thank you for everything you've done for our city.
Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take this time, as I, you know, since I got elected, I've been sharing a space next to you on the dais, and thank you for your service. You know, I did not know, you probably started when you were in middle school as a city employee, but I really appreciate the work that you've done here, and it's been a pleasure sharing the dais with you.
Councilmember Avirio.
I just want to say thank you, Deborah, and may your success be a testament to all college students who major in French.[1336.71][1336.71](LAUGHTER).
Deb, I just want to say thanks. I know that you know that you were faced with not only an incredible challenge from outside, but also the challenges we always posed you from inside, and I've told you often, I'd never want your job. I think that quite often, the city managers put in an almost impossible situation because we tend to not make things easy on you as a whole. But through that time, it's been great working with you, not only in the times that we agreed, but even in the times we disagreed, because you really know how to handle those situations. And you have served me as a council member very well, and you've served my residents in District One and the residents throughout San Jose incredibly well. So thank you, and may you have a long and fun retirement now that your family actually gets you back.
Councilmember Camus.
Well, I didn't get to serve with you very long, but I want to thank you for getting me acquainted to my job and training me on how things work, and the one thing that I want to say is just how professional you are in the way you conducted business. I was super impressed. I think the city was very lucky to have you in these tough times, and I'm actually very sad to see you go, but I hope you enjoy your retirement and think of us. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. At the reception last week, Mayor Reed said that to Deb, that she is indeed the best city manager that ever worked at City Hall, and I just wanted to say that I wholeheartedly concur with that statement. Wanted to thank you for your service, your dedication to our city, and also to a million people in our city. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to echo my appreciation as being really an honor and a pleasure to serve with you for the last six and a half years. Good luck with your retirement.
Councilmember Coler.
Deb, I just want to wish you good luck. I know at your young age, there's probably much more that you want to and are going to do, and I wish you well in that. And over the years, it's been tough years, and there have been a lot that we've agreed upon, and there's certainly been a lot that we haven't. We've always been very respectful of each other and always been able to walk into and out of meetings with smiles, and I appreciate that.
Councilmember Rocha.
I'll share what I shared with you yesterday in our last one-on-one, is I greatly appreciate your public service to San Jose, to the city I was born in, and I love very much so, and I saw the passion and commitment that you have to it as well, and for that, I'll always be indebted. Thank you.
City Attorney.
Deborah, I just want to say that, you know, having served with you for the last six and a half years, you were dealt a tough hand, and I'm amazed that you kept showing up. So, congratulations on your retirement and enjoy it.
Well, obviously, thank you on behalf of all of us. Now, back to the consent calendar. I have some requests to speak on a consent calendar. Mr. Wall.
With reference to a Rules Committee report, and also with reference to 2.7 combined, I want to read the portion of the, this basically deals with residential impact fees and inclusionary housing ordinances. Now, this is going to show up in several other issues today, but I wanted to basically read petitioner's first question in the Supreme Court of the State of California, case number S., as in Sam, 212072, California Building Industry Association petitioner versus City of San Jose respondent, Affordable Housing Network of Santa Clara County et al. as intervenors. Most inclusion, quote, "most inclusionary housing ordinances," which exact property interests or in lieu development fees as a condition of development permit approval be reasonably related to the deleterious impact of the development on which they are imposed as set forth in San Remo Hotel LP versus the City and County of San Francisco, period, or question mark, close quote. Now, this is going to show up later today because these fees are arguably unconstitutional, and they are takings versus land use decisions that are governed by the police power of municipalities. This has a very significant impact on fees that have already been collected, because what are you doing with those fees to begin with, should the Supreme Court overrule you and have to pay this money back with whatever penalties and/or interests? So I think this is a very interesting case that we'll be discussing in part throughout today's proceeding as it applies to specific issues as they appear on the agenda. Thank you.
That concludes the testimony on the consent calendar. Are there requests that councilmembers would like to pull items for discussion? Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. Would like to pull item 2.8, just for some clarifying questions.
Councilmember Liccardo.
213 and 222. Thank you, Mayor.
And I'd like to pull 2.15. Any others? Is there a motion? We have a motion to approve the balance of second by Herrera. Motion by, and win, second by Herrera, of the balance of consent calendar, so that includes everything except 2.8, 13, 15, and 22. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. It's turned into 2.8. Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm not sure which staff might be here to answer these questions.
Just 2.8 is the reimbursable space act agreement with the National Aeronics and Space Administration.
Right, so my question, Nancy, one, I think it's a good idea, it's a great idea to have our aircraft, you know, taken off and being stored and landing in our jurisdiction, but one of the questions I have, given that Reed Hill View is in a sensitive zone, you don't have a lot of aircraft or helicopter movements out of that airport. Helicopters do have to comply with certain patterns that they have to approach and leave the airport. Most of those patterns, just like San Jose International, planes and helicopters have to take off south to north for most of the year, given the wind patterns, which takes them directly over, you know, homes. Now, I know the nature of a police helicopter is it's flying around the, you know, the the Now, I know the nature of a police helicopter is it's flying around the, you know, the neighborhoods. But the question I would have is, has there been any outreach? Because I haven't seen any outreach in terms of a, you know, public hearing or community meeting, just to talk about this is the plan and just to get feedback from the community, given that this airport has been very sensitive in District Five and the East Side for decades.
Thank you, councilmember. Going forward from Elise, there is something that we can check in with you. As mentioned in the memo before you, there's still work to be done before any final arrangement would come to Reed Hillview. So we will definitely think about that and coordinate with your office as we go forward.
So I would actually, I'm going to make a motion right now. And I would like us to go beyond thinking about it and actually doing it. So I'd like to move item 2.8 to include one of the conditions that we have a community meeting to notify the public that this new tenant is coming in, and one of them being a helicopter. That will get a lot of use out of that airport.
All right. We have a motion to approve with the amendment. On that motion, all in favor? Councilwoman Camus, I'm sorry. We have, Nancy, we have a question for you.
Sorry, Nancy. I just, you know, I agree that we should have a notification. It's fine with me. But I know that we've been negotiating with the county for a while on this. And I was wondering, are there other sites that we can actually house the helicopter, like, for example, our own airport? Is that a potential there? And, you know, I just actually came back from a tour of the Southern Station. And they actually have a place where they can actually land the helicopter there as well. And I was, you know, told that it fits the helicopter there, too. So I was wondering if those two sites were also being considered besides the Santa Clara County facility.
Councilmember, thank you for the question. There are other opportunities which we will review prior to coming forward with a final recommendation.
Councilman Colra.
Just to comment, if there's any, at any point, if there's any consideration of using the substation in South San Jose, please give me long notice before that's ever even a thought in someone's mind. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Councilmember Herrera.
Yeah, Reed Hillview's definitely affects my district, too. And so I think it's a good idea to have a community meeting. But I'm, what I'd like to hear is from the Police Department input when we consider this in terms of what location makes more sense for having the helicopter located. I have a feeling Reed Hillview might be a pretty good one. I know those helicopters circle in our area a lot. They circle around my house and our vicinity. So I know that they get a lot of use over in that region.
All right. If this motion is approved, we'll have until September 30 of 2014 to figure it all out. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Motion is approved. 2.13 would be next. Councilmember Liccardo, that is the agreement of the County of Santa Clara for payment of first responder fees.
Thank you, Mayor. Ed or whoever might be able to respond. I know we had a conversation in closed session. And in light of that, I'm just trying to fully understand. Our compensation from the county is reduced by liquidated damages amount. And is it the case the full amount of liquidated damages depends on our response time? Is it our fire department?
Yes, that is correct. And I think it might be worth having a fire representative describe that in a little more detail.
Sure. Thank you very much. I know other councilmembers were similarly puzzled by the issue, as I was. And thank you for coming forward to talk. My understanding was that we implemented Star Cars as a pilot program, essentially to try to more effectively meet response time targets. And it appears that in some ways, it may have reduced our ability to respond as quickly as we'd like. And I'm hoping you might be able to explain, so I can understand better, how that's affecting both our response time, most importantly, because I know we all share the same goal there, but also how it's affecting our reimbursements to the county.
Good afternoon, Juan Diaz, Deputy Chief.
Thank you.
Councilmember Liccardo, we have five squads in service. Since July of this year, all five went into service. Prior to July, we only had three. So for the last six months, our squads have responded in a neighborhood of 9,000 calls. There are some calls in which the squads have not met their response times. But overall, we cannot attribute our response times performance just on the squads.
Okay. Wes, just so I understand the nature of this Rural Metro contract, are we getting every dollar to which we'd be entitled if Rural Metro were paying us directly? In other words, has anything changed about the calculation now that Rural Metro is bankrupt?
There has not been any change in the contract regarding the reimbursement to the fire department for our first responder fees.
Okay.
Their bankruptcy has not had any impact on that.
Great. And I know we're getting reimbursed for a period from April to July. I think they declare bankruptcy in August. Can we continue to expect these payments through the county while after the period of bankruptcy?
So Santa Clara County intervened, and they're providing the April, May, June, and July payment.
Right.
The next payment that is due is September, October. We have contacted Santa Clara County EMS, and they informed us that they will be requiring Rural Metro to be providing that payment to San Jose Fire sometime in the month of December. We were supposed to have received it by December 1st, but we have not.
That's shocking, I know. I guess my question is then, if Rural Metro doesn't pay, does the county pay? And do we get paid for our response?
I think that question would probably be best answered by the city attorney.
Okay.
However, what we're signing, if you approve this today, stipulates in there that future payments will not be the responsibility of Santa Clara County.
Will not be?
Will not be. It will go back to the original contract, which requires Rural Metro to pay out of the $5 million trust fund to pay our first responder fees.
Okay. Thank you for telling me that, because now I'm really nervous. Rick, do you want to shed any light on this?
Councilmember, I'm going to have to pull, I don't have the contract with me.
Okay.
I'd like to pull, and we can get an F M O out to council on that.
Okay.
Just a general rule about bankruptcy, though, is that, you know, on an ongoing basis, you're supposed to stay current. And that's usually the process. But we'll look at the agreements, and we will get something out to council.
If I may, councilmember, in our communications with Santa Clara County EMS agency and Rural Metro, they have not given us any reason to believe that Rural Metro is not going to pay going forward.
And I appreciate your representation, chief. I recognize that you're giving us a straight scoop from your perspective. My concern is a broader one about Rural Metro and its ability to meet obligations, which it's demonstrated some challenges in doing that in the past, certainly. And particularly with regard to the nature in which the contract was entered into with the county. I know that there were a lot of concerns raised publicly about the choice of Rural Metro, the fact that they couldn't perform as they had promised. In fact, for a significant period of time, they underperformed dramatically and, in fact, are now going through bankruptcy. I'm not eager to support this at this time. I don't know if a deferral to enable city attorney to have an opportunity to look at the contract would in any way interfere with our ability to move forward. But if, assuming there would be no time urgency in this, I'd like to make a motion to defer so we can get more information.
City Attorney.
Yeah, the only, I'm looking at the resolution. This essentially, just so it's clear to the council what this is, this represents an amount that's prepetition. And it's from April to July 13th. The county has agreed to make those payments, less the liquidated damages. And in exchange, we're assigning all our rights and claims that we might have and that they could pursue against Rural Metro in the bankruptcy proceeding. Like I said, ongoing typically in a bankruptcy, you're supposed, you need to stay current. I don't know the nature of the proceeding. We do have bankruptcy counsel. We can consult with her. And we, again, as a time sensitive sensitivity, I'm not, I don't know if this can't wait till January 14th or not. But we'll get on it as soon as we can.
I mean, I'm happy to go forward with a portion of this that essentially has us accepting dollars from the county, as you might expect. What I'm concerned about is agreeing to the assignment, if in fact, that constrains our remedies to waiting for a check from Rural Metro. Because I don't have any reason to believe, we should be confident that that money will arrive.
Well, with that condition, we could move forward. And if there is a, the assignment does get us to that position, then we would not move forward. But we would take the motion to say we're approving, accepting the compromise that the county has proposed. But with respect to any assignment, any conditions on the assignment, that we might be giving something up, we would not move forward with it and come back in January.
Okay. Then I'll make, I'll revise my motion if I can withdraw it and make a motion to approve, accept as to any assignment of rights and ensure that the city has fully preserved its rights as to both the county and Rural Metro.
All right. We have a motion. I'd like to clarify the motion because we've got two time periods, one looking backwards and one looking forward. So I'm assuming if we're going to get money from the county for the looking backwards, we're going to have to assign our rights.
Yeah.
So it's the going-forward rights that we're concerned about.
The representation that's been made to me is we're getting every dollar we owed. So if that's the case, I'm certainly fine with that. Yeah.
So, city attorney, I just want to, if we're going to get money, we're going to have to do something to give to the county to get rid of our old claims.
That's right. And these are the prepetition claims we would get paid. In exchange, we would sign any rights we have prepetition. Postpetition's a different issue.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Liccardo. Councilmember Camus.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a question regarding the, you said we now have five squad cars.
Correct.
Squads, units, sorry, not cars. I'm still not 100%. I mean, I said this also in the closed session. Are we seeing an improvement of the times with the addition of the two more? You said we had three before, now we have five. Are you seeing an improvement in the times, the response times? Or are you, you know, obviously, you bought two, you have two more. So you must think that we're doing something right. I just don't want us going down the wrong path if you think the squad cars are actually increasing response times. So what is your opinion? I mean, we're looking, you know, we want to make sure that the response times improve, not go the other direction.
Councilmember Camus, thank you for that question. We've always had five squads. In fact, we have six. One is in reserve.
Okay.
So if one of those five needs to go in for service. You asked me for my opinion, and that is professionally, I do believe they have helped our response times. By the end of this year, we're going to have 14,000 calls in which the squads have responded instead of a larger apparatus, an engine or a truck. So the fact is that they're taking calls that otherwise we would require other resources to respond to. The challenge for us on the squads is that their response area expands beyond their station. So that, for example, if you have a squad at Station 26 on Tully Road, they respond technically all the way into Willow Glen and all the way into the East Side, if you follow me. So potentially, during the different times of the day, depending on traffic conditions. And the fact that they typically respond on a code-two response, in other words, without lights and sirens, and due to traffic conditions for these low priority calls, whether a squad takes the call or an engine takes the call, it's going to take you time to get there. Does that help you?
It does. You're saying that the circle, that the circle that they answer is a bigger circle than would have been a normal engine?
Correct.
Okay. So that actually makes sense to me. I'm happy to hear it. Are we looking at expanding the use of squad cars, so the size of the circles? Are we planning on going from five to 10, for example?
So this is a pilot program, and there's a lot of study that still needs to occur. We are in the process of ordering new ambulance type of apparatus, squads. So we have a new one that we're going to be ordering. So that's going to increase our fleet to seven. So I can see in the future where if the need were to be by the council and approved by the department, that we want to expand the number, we will have the resources there. So it's a pilot program. We, I can't here tell you today what we're going to do for sure. But I believe that they are an effective tool in meeting our response times as well as deploying resources effectively by just having two people on the call.
Well, I've thought it made extremely very logical common sense to have them there. It's just, I think the statistics that they're being asked to fill are unfair because you have a larger circle of the calls that they have to go answer. So it's a little unfair to treat them as if it was a normal call from any other engine. So I think the statistics probably are swayed a little bit in the wrong direction because of that. So I don't, anyway, I don't know how your statistics are being calculated, but I'd love to see an improvement of an apples-to-apples comparison rather than, you know, the new method.
If I may add, Councilman Camus, every quarter, we review our statistics. And I can inform you that approximately a month ago, the decision was made that effective on December 1st, the squads are only going to respond to their second due area instead of going to their third due. But I don't have any statistics that just occurred to give you that information.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you. My question is about the liquidated damages that were being assessed. So is that for not meeting the response time? Is that, why are we being assessed these liquidated damages?
Councilmember Herrera, thank you for the question. That is correct. That is for not meeting response times.
And so do we know the total amount of liquidated damages now? Are we still waiting for the calculation for the month of July?
There is a memo, an addendum that was provided, that we do know exactly what that is.
Okay. And so what's the total amount that we're going to receive, assuming we? Okay, I see 37,600 was additional for July. Additional liquidated damages for July.
Correct.
Okay. So is that, from what I understand, are we able to see what the response times are? And are we tracking it? I noticed that there's a graph that keeps showing up in the assessor's material that's blank. And so we don't, we're not able to record, to look at the response times over time. And I understand there's some software issues with that. Can you help us understand? Do you have all the data we need to make sure that we're tracking response times, too? Obviously, we'd like to not pay liquidated damages. That's not the ideal circumstance. What are we doing to reduce that?
Let me refer to Deputy Director Ronda Kelly.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Herrera, for the question. You are correct. We have a performance measure team, IT team, put together, and they've been working for several months trying to get under the tent of CAD so we can get direct access and validate our response times. We're talking about serving two masters here, though, just so that you understand. The contract with EMS has a different methodology to it, and it only calculates the response to EMS emergencies. And it also allows us to pull some of those responses out. For example, if we have a full first going for a structure fire, and at the same time, we receive EMS calls, we don't have to calculate those in because the county understands that that depletes the city, and it would take us a longer time. So that becomes a little bit of a moving target. We have to calculate it each month and provide it to them. And then they look at that, and then they calculate our penalties. I call them penalties, but it's less reimbursement than we would have gotten. And so, as you know, the full calculation, according to the contract and what's in the trust fund annually in this year is $2.6 million. But we only factor, for budgetary purposes, 2.2 because we know that we're going to be hitting some penalties along the way.
So I guess I'm just trying to understand, is it our, is it the reporting itself and not really that we're missing response time? How much of it is the reporting itself? That's confusing. So we're not being charged unfairly with these fees? That's what I'm trying to understand, is that?
In this case, because it's a different methodology, this is pretty close. However, this team is also going to be assessing that methodology as well to see if there's any things that can be adjusted. It's been a long process because we've had to get, the team leader, the IT person that we hired, had to get backgrounded, and we had to get him into the CAD in order to do that. So the police had to background him. They're just about complete. As a matter of fact, we'll be giving a report to Ed Schicata here later this week about where we are at this point in time. But we're looking at all of it, including the response times for everything else that we do in the city, which includes all calls.
Great. Thank you.
I think we're done talking about this. We have a motion to approve. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. Next item is 2.15. That is the contract for Lake contract for Lake Cunningham recreational bike facility staff on that one. We've got $700,000 in the Lake Cunningham fund, we're authorizing $500,000 to be spent. What I'd like to do is to make sure this comes back to us after we spend, say, $100,000, so we can look at the scope of the project, figure out the budget. I don't want to spend $500,000 and then find out that we can't afford to do the project. Can we figure that out earlier rather than later?
Mayor, David Sykes, Director of Public Works, yeah, I believe we can. Certainly, the agreement that we brought forward is a master agreement, so it is structured in such a way that it is scalable. We'd only be authorizing work through individual task orders based on the work that we wanted to get done. But if the council would prefer that we kind of take a look at it before moving forward on the bigger project, I would recommend a number of around $200,000, because that would allow us to kind of get through the Phase 1 project design and kind of know and understand the cost of that project, and then, of course, the council could make that decision on whether we should move forward or not.
Okay, $200,000, I don't want to spend all the money and then realize we don't have enough money to do the project, and then it sits and waits, and we don't know what the cost is, might be millions, maybe we'll have millions, maybe we won't, and let's size it and bring it back, and then we can make that charge-ahead decision. Councilmember Herrera?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for that suggestion, and I know that the bike, this bike park has changed in scope and size while we've been studying this and looking at it. I've been, my staff's been involved in working with Parks and Rec on this, I've been very involved in Lake Cunningham with the skate park and other things out there. So I think the bike park's a very important piece of what we're trying to do to really invigorate and activate Lake Cunningham. We've got a lot of different bike organizations that are very interested in being part of this. I think we will end up getting more events out there, having more community involved in biking, and actually be able to bring more revenue to the park. So I think it's a good project, but I do like the idea of taking a look at, doing this in chunks, as Joe Horvath would say, you know, doing the 200,000 level, chunking it, and being able to assess where we go, because we have changed, the project has changed in scope, and so it could change again. And so I totally agree with that, and I'd make a motion that we come back and look at this as, at the $200,000 range, and before we allocate the whole 500.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with that modification at the 200,000 level for a check back to the council. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. 2.22, Councilmember Liccardo?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to offer some thanks and a bit of celebration. I think this will be the 150th parking agreement we'll sign under this incentive, and I wanted to thank all the folks who worked so hard in implementing this. Jim Ortball, certainly, and his team, Nancy Klein, Lee Wilcox, and the small but mighty team of OED. This parking incentive now has resulted in over a half million square feet of new and renewed leases, a lot of employers now filling downtown space. We know we've got a lot of work to do still, but I think this is incredible progress, and I want to thank Councilmember Herrera and the mayor for joining me and signing that memo way back in March of 2010 that got this rolling. I think this has been a great thing for our downtown, and we're really seeing enormous amount of momentum now. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion is approved. I'm looking forward to it, we don't have any excess parking. That'll come soon. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. Completing our consent calendar, next item would be the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is my final opportunity for regular oral reports to the council, and I'd just like to begin by thanking the mayor for actually adding the item 3.1. Shortly after I began, he thought it'd be a good idea, saw it happening at VTA, and I think it's given the manager a great opportunity to report on things of importance in a timely way. So over the past six and a half years, I have reported on hundreds of topics, and a common theme has been the excellent work that our city employees do every day to make San Jose a better place to live and work. And so I will use this final occasion to note with great pride that the city of San Jose earned three awards last week from the Silicon Valley Leadership Group for our outstanding achievements. The leadership group launched its Red Tape to Red Carpet Awards to celebrate the innovations and commitment of public agencies to build a strong and vibrant economy and to create jobs in the Bay region. San Jose won three of seven awards presented last Thursday night. These were Manetta, San Jose International Airport, in the category for responding to globalization, where the airport was specifically recognized for its modernization program, and its success in obtaining new service to Japan. The next was the San Jose High Rise Incentive Program in the category of sustainable green development, which recognized our efforts to boost a vibrant urban environment in downtown San Jose with programs that target and create a positive relationship between economic development and environmental sustainability. And then finally, the San Jose and Samsung Project in the category of real estate development and reuse, which recognized our innovative reuse of real estate to develop a landmark project for our city and Silicon Valley, one that would preserve and create jobs and strengthen ties with a leading technology innovator. So congratulations to all of our employees who helped us to earn these awards. And what is clear to me and to our business partners who appreciate our commitment is that our organization is truly a leader, and one that despite our challenges and sacrifices over the last several years, has just continued to serve in an outstanding way, and who have never stopped looking for better ways to provide service to our community. So what I will miss most is working with this devoted team every day. They are great public servants, and I do know that they'll continue to earn awards as these for our community, and it is my hope that they'll continue to earn the respect and the confidence of our community as they go about doing their public service. Thank you all, and Ed, all the best to you as you take over this wonderful role. Thank you.
Mr. Wall, you want to comment on this item?
Yes, I would. With reference to environmental sustainability, has there been any changes to the low bidding aspects to the city charter put forth by your office, so we don't end up having to choose a contractor such as Applegate Johnson Incorporated? And could you please respond as to whether or not you would recommend to the next city manager to use a contractor that has known failed financial and subcontractor problems to be utilized for the next generation of new market tax credit pursuits? Thank you.
Our next item is 3.3, the living wage policy. We had a recommendation from our city staff to defer that to January 28th. Councilmember Constant wanted to talk about it, so we're going to do that now. Councilmember Constant?
Thanks, Mayor. I received an email after the close of business yesterday about the request for a deferral, and there wasn't a whole lot of detail in it. And I'd like to get some specifics on why we want to defer and what work is intended to be done, because I'll tell you, I've been here almost exactly seven years, and we've talked about this space ad nauseam, and we've had opportunities in the past where we weren't able to do things when I think we should have, and I think that we have an item that's been noticed for a while. There is an obvious benefit, in my mind, for us to be doing this, and from the memos that I've seen from some of my colleagues, I think we should be moving forward. So I'd like to hear a little bit more.
Yes, I will ask Kim Wallace to come down and help answer that question, council member. And, you know, we do believe that the policy question should be called, so that we know one way or the other as we're pursuing opportunities or creating opportunities, such as the case at the convention center. But there are a few things in play, and I'd like to have Kim talk about those which might make calling that question better in a month or so, once there are a few knowns on our side, and I think that's kind of the essence of it. But Kim?
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and council. Yeah, I made the recommendation to Deb and Ed yesterday that we defer for another month. There were some questions raised that I really thought required some further analysis, so that you could have a better, more complete council deliberation. For example, the question of the tenants downtown who are in agency properties or former agency properties, the small businesses like Flames and Whispers and Rosie's and Posey's, how does that relate to this conversation? The attorney's office have an item concerning conformance with the state prevailing wage, we need to understand how that might connect with this. And of course, the patent office, is there some moving pieces there about whether we'll even have the 4th Street retail space available? So though it's important conversation, it's not time-sensitive. We are in communication with Team San Jose, the executive director and the board, and with Starbucks and the others involved. So we'll bring it back on January 28th.
So I just, you know, I think that when you look at the convention center, the activation of that plaza is really going to be key to enlivening that area and key to the success of a fully completed convention center expansion. I think, I just want to remind everyone that in the seven years that we've, that I've been here, that we've been staring at that empty storefront area, we've lost hundreds of thousand dollars of revenue that could have been coming into the city directly from rent, not to mention the indirect revenue that would come in from the economic activity going on there. I just find it frustrating that, you know, I find out at basically nine o'clock in the morning when I show up that we're going to be deferring something like this that has been pending for such a long time. So while I appreciate the reasons, for me, it's too little, too late. I'm not going to vote for the deferral, but I just want to have the opportunity to explain myself and why I don't think we should be delaying this any longer. I think it's, it's, we've just seven years, that's just the time I've been involved, and it's been longer than that. So enough said for me, that's why I don't support the deferral.
I'm going to support the deferral. There was a team that came from the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office to visit last week toward the space, and I'd say there's a high probability that the space on the 4th Street garage site would be something that we would want to do a deal with the USPTO. Councilmember Colra?
Thank you, Mayor, and I know there are varying opinions on the underlying policy issue, as well as the two specific leases that are under consideration. I've talked to Kim about it, and some of us feel we should go forward, some we shouldn't, but I think that at this point, with the staff requesting a continuance and coming back in the end of January, at least then there could be more of a thoughtful debate. Part of the problem that I had with this coming rather abruptly was it wasn't just a matter of those two specific leases, it was the policy itself. There was a request from staff to adopt a resolution approving basically a change of the living wage policy, and oftentimes on matters of this nature, we do a lot of, we take the time, and it oftentimes goes through a process similar to priority setting, where there's at least a lot of analysis on the actual underlying policies. There's more than just two simple leases, and so I certainly support staff's request to come back on this with a more thorough discussion that the council can have, as well as staff having the opportunity on the more specific issues to have further discussions with the Patent and Trademark Office, to see if we have an opportunity to fill this space regardless, so it doesn't even need to be addressed on one of the properties that's referenced in the staff report. And so with that, I'll make a recommend, and one last note is that Pete's not the only one that got the request for deferral, a lot of members of the community did as well, and a lot of them aren't here today because of the staff request for deferral, which oftentimes is pretty routine, under orders of the day is requested, because if staff needs more time, understand the frustration from Pete and don't discount that, but there's frustration, I think, in many corners. And so the reality is that a lot of people aren't here today that otherwise would have been if it weren't for the staff request for a deferral. I think the request is reasonable, and I look forward to staff coming back with more information on this matter. So I'll make a motion to accept staff's request for deferral.
All right, we have a motion to defer the 28th. Councilmember Liccardo?
One bit of clarification, my understanding was that this was a clarification of city policy, that in fact, there's no substantive change. Could you clarify for us, Kim, or Rick?
I think there's, I think there's an interpretation issue, and we had had communications with Public Works, in our view, the retail lease, we drove it initially, was a retail lease at Starbucks at the convention center, and it was subject to living wage, no different than the Pete's coffee in the convention center is paying the current living wage. So that policy would have continued, this was an effort to say, get clarification that it wasn't going to continue, and that's why the staff was proposing the exemption as well as the policy change, to get clarification on leases of city property.
But we don't have those requirements at Rosie's and Posey's, do we, or?
Those were redevelopment agency leases, and the redevelopment agency was never subject, property was never subject to living wage. It's an anomaly of when the living wage policy was created, agency properties such as Flames or Rosie's and Posey's, they were not subject to living wage.
Whispers, all those.
Yeah, city, city properties were subject to living wage, and that's just how the policy was established in the 1990s.
And just from my perspective, and you, I think Rick's right, there's lots of reasons why we have come to this point, but at this point, there are kind of inconsistencies of the application. So we truly were looking for council's direction on, on how to apply the living wage requirements.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for us to articulate clearly whatever staff memo comes through, that we have for many years operated, most of the retail sites that the city or agency has owned have been without these requirements, and undoubtedly, that has something to do with the fact of why they're full, and city retail, city hall has been empty for eight years. In any event, thank you.
We have a motion to defer, I have a couple requests to speak, Jim Reed and David Wall.
Jim Reed with the San Jose Silicon Valley Chamber of Commerce, and whenever it is that you all take this item up, we would urge you to support staff recommendation. The, and anytime public decision-making is made, the one thing that really can't be ignored is the power and influence of the market. People can have different perspectives about how that can be moderated or dealt with as it relates to your decisions, but it has to be taken into account. I think the council member, Roach's memo that asked questions about just how much this would cost, what the dollar impacts would be, all of those are great and worthy of study. I think all of us understand, though, if you have one business that's got a $10 minimum wage, and another business is dealing with a $15 or a $17 minimum wage, then one person is competing with a hand tied behind their back. So this seems to be an opportunity to expand services downtown, expand amenities, bring in some revenue to the city. For folks who are on the lower end of the income scale and you want to try and do more to help them, the chamber believes the best way to do that is with an earned income tax credit, where you can put more money into their pocket, but you don't have a disincentive on employers to hire more people. So again, when the time comes, we would urge you to support staff recommendation.
Mr. Wall?
Sir, I think what we have here today is a clear-cut case of getting caught with your britches down. And with reference to equality in the workplace and how governments work with reference to equal protection under the law, I think it's now time that you either modify the living wage ordinance or just throw it out completely and let the marketplace dictate wages and benefits. These folks want to unionize, that's a different issue, you know, that's a completely different issue here. But I think this space here on 4th Street has been vacant way too long. I also don't like this minimum wage ordinance because there's no upper cap to it. At what point in time is it going to be $60 or $80 an hour, or even higher than that? Unilateral legislative decisions to raise people up where they don't raise themselves up by their own bootstraps are problematical to me. One example, for example, we use is that there's a common eatery favorable to the city manager, myself, and other people in District 6, is threatening to close down its operation because of this living wage operation, outstanding Italian restaurant. Also, on the same order, another Italian restaurant is a union shop downtown, which is a stalwart iconic Italian restaurant on Third at East San Carlo Street. So we see that if people unionize, the employees in these service areas get raised up through their collective bargaining, but the quality of services aren't guaranteed by legislative living wage type boat raising. So I say that it is quite humorous to me that this wasn't discussed with all the learned people that sit before me until now, and people that sit before me until now, and I think that you should really take serious steps to just eliminate this living wage ordinance and look at people saying, hey, unionize, or you're at your own mercy of your own personal self-interest and personal, basically, value to society. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony. We have a motion to defer. Councilmember Oliverio.
Thank you, Mayor. The U.S. Patent Office was mentioned in the conversation, and I know at one point the mayor made some type of bid, made the offering of City Hall, looks like they've said, hey, we're interested, and I'm just curious, is that a discussion, since we've already sort of acted on it, that that's just something that's going to be carried out by the city manager and they're going to execute all the details? Or how is that going to work?
Well, the lease gets approved by the city council.
Okay.
So, there's work to be done, but ultimately, the city council is like the lease we're going to take up here in a few minutes when it comes to the city council.
And, but my understanding is that staff, you're going to work out where they will locate versus bringing us options of where they'll locate, or, I mean, I'd rather see this be done in a streamlined fashion, get the Patent Office opened, also, but also aware that there's an unknown amount to be decided for tenant improvements, so I'm just curious.
Yes, we will work with the Patent Office to meet their requirements and our requirements, and need to identify as soon as possible where in the building is the best fit for them, and then we'll work on understanding the costs involved on both sides, and we'll bring a lease back to you in ideally probably February or March for review.
And would you say there's at least two, two options, or are there three options of where they'd locate?
There's different combinations of spaces. There's one or two lead options.
Okay. Thank you.
City manager.
And council member, to the degree we need council direction as we proceed with that negotiation, then that would be conceivably a topic of closed session.
So, closed session, not public session?
For council to direct its negotiators, that's in closed session.
I'll publicly say, I hope we look for the option that's the least amount of money to us, the city. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to defer this item. Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. Given that we're now doing this not under orders of the day, but here, I had submitted a memo with the items in my memo and the questions posed in my memo be included in the direction for further information, or do we need to make a motion to defer the item and include my memo? Is it what I'm getting at? Should I ask for my memo to be included in the deferral?
Yes, I think you should.
Okay, then I'd like to request the maker of the motion to include the items in my memo listed for further information.
Okay. I don't know who had the second. Rose had the second? Okay. The memo's included in there, so request for information when it comes back. On the motion, all in favor. Opposed? One opposed. Councilmember constant, motion carries. Next item is 3.4, an amendment to the agreement with Air Transport IT Services for Integrated This is the fourth amendment to this agreement. A motion to approve. On the motion, all in favor. Opposed? None opposed. That's approved. Item 4.1, a lease renewal for the San Jose Municipal Stadium. We will have a staff presentation on that, or at least staff will be here to ask any questions, I think, rather than a presentation. I would like to note that in preparation for this meeting, that my staff have met with Dan Orem from the San Jose Giants and John Tautora from San Jose Sharks Organization. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I wanted to thank staff, particularly Nancy Klein, for working closely with the San Jose Giants and Sharks Ice to bring this lease forward. The San Jose Municipal Stadium is not only a treasure asset in our city, but it's also home to the San Jose Giants. The San Jose Giants have always been a great supporters of our community, and they're located in my council district, which I'm very proud to have them, who offer a variety of free programs, giving local families and schoolchildren an opportunity to be spectators at baseball games and other events that takes place at the stadium. So, over the past five years, the San Jose Giants have generated over $1.5 million through ticket programs, which have been contributed to local schools, youth sports organizations, and local charities, and for the past five years, they have also contributed $425,000 in stadium maintenance and capital improvements. So, the lease we have before us is really a, many months of working with both the Giants and Sharks Ice to come up with a mechanism where parking will be made available to all the patrons, and that these two organizations will be able to manage and operate in a way that's very cordial, which is something we'd like to see. And so, I'm very proud to support this recommendation. I wanted to thank the mayor and also council member Combos for co-signing this memo, and with that, I move to approve.
Motion is to approve. I want to thank our Office of Economic Development and our city attorney's staff for really pretty lengthy efforts to negotiate this extension with the San Jose Giants. If it had only been the San Jose Giants, I guess it would have been a lot quicker, but we also have Sharks Ice right there, and one of the things that this agreement does is help improve that relationship and help with the management of the parking that I think will improve the operations for everybody involved. I want to thank Dan Orem for the things that the Giants do at the stadium beyond baseball. It's a great venue for a lot of things in our community. I think our Sharks Ice people and Sharks Organization for trying to figure out how to make all the parking work. We have one of the busiest ICE facilities in the country, right there next to the baseball stadium, and sometimes it's a little difficult to get everybody in at the same time, but they figured out how to work it out. So, I think both organizations will be successful. With that, I'd like to take some comments from the public, starting with Dan Orem, and
Mayor Reed and council members, thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge all the hard work also done by the city manager's office, OED, the city attorney's office, and the San Jose Arena Authority in helping sort of bring this lease extension together. We're very proud to be a part of the community. The San Jose Giants have been providing fun, affordable family entertainment for San Jose for nearly 30 years now, and simply said, we would be honored to continue this tradition for another five years. So, thank you for the consideration on this matter.
Good afternoon, Dan McFadden. I'm here on behalf of the Sharks Ice facility that you mentioned, Mayor, and on behalf of all the Sharks, I'd like you to support this agreement because I think it will, this new protocol will enhance the operation of parking down there to the benefit of both operations, Municipal Stadium and Sharks Ice. And I'd like to thank the staff for all their efforts on this, particularly Nancy Klein, and thank Dan Orem for his cooperation. Thank you.
David Wall.
I think the council owes a significant debt of gratitude to the San Jose Giants. I also think the city council should apologize for its egregious conduct of almost treating it as an abandoned child with reference to the unholy pursuit of the Oakland Athletics to come to the city of San Jose. The council has spent untold millions of dollars, actually $25.2 million, acquiring land for a baseball stadium downtown using its redevelopment agency powers. However, this land was, redevelopment agencies can't purchase land for baseball stadiums. They can only produce it for housing. So, we have an inherent misrepresentation in pursuit of the As with reference to not thanking the continuation of great volunteer efforts by the San Jose Giants to better off the communities and life of our residents. And so, this mere little commentary that we see from council today thanking the Giants for this lease is disingenuous on its face, because this is the only baseball team we have, and you've treated them very shabbily, especially in the press, the amount of money that you've expended, the deals that you're trying to make, and now at this last hour of the year, you're coming out and say, hey, we got to thank you just on our face so we don't really look that bad. But these folks in the organization of the San Jose Giants, I think arguably, have done more for this community than all of your efforts combined, and I'm not being disrespectful or mean spirited here. These folks do it consistently, day in and day out, without any enticement for personal or corporate reward. These people are really great corporate citizens here and a really valued asset to this community, and I think that they should be treated a lot better by this council. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony. Councilmember Colra.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank you, my colleagues, for the memo regarding the approval of the lease renewal. I think that, I know a lot of work was put into it, both from our community partners, certainly from the San Jose Giants and Sharks Ice, as well as city staff, put in a tremendous amount of work in defining something that would work, and having parking constraints or parking strain and pressure is usually, and in this case, too, a good thing. It means that people are attending, people want to enjoy the amenities that you have in your community, and we always talk about a sense of place in our city, and I think we do have a sense of place here. It's one of the few places, or one of the few places we hope to have many more into the future, but this is a sense of place that's already attracting thousands and thousands of people every year, either to enjoy downtown ICE or to enjoy the San Jose Giants, or both. And so, as we go forward into the future, I look forward to this partnership continuing, especially as we see, we seek further opportunities to expand downtown ICE, and since that's such a tremendous facility, and certainly with the opportunity to continue to maintain and potentially even upgrade, hopefully in the future, the stadium for the San Jose Giants. I'm very glad that we're able to at least get some stability in the short term while we see what the long-term plans are going to be for this part of our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Liccardo.
Thank you, Mayor. Rick, are the Giants still signed on to lawsuits against the city? That is, the Stanford-San Jose lawsuit?
Yes, there are two lawsuits. There are the first Stanford-San Jose lawsuit, the San Jose Giants are stated to be part of Stanford-San Jose. Nothing's changed in that lawsuit. So, it's, but this matter has been disassociated from those cases.
Okay. And Nancy, with regard to the rent, I assume that the historic average of somewhere around $25,000 or $30,000 is more or less what we'd expect to continue to receive in rent for the site?
Yes. Public Works and OED had done a review of similar stadiums, and there is a variety of involvement from communities but, or municipal bonds that are used, and so, given the age of the facility and given the burden for maintenance and operations, what the Giants, San Jose Giants pay is commensurate with what you would find in other communities.
Well, I know what I pay for a mortgage, and what the Giants would pay for this stadium and the surrounding site amounts to about $200 an acre per month, and I've got an 1,100-square-foot house on a much smaller site than an acre, and I paid 10 times as much for my mortgage. And I don't have any problem cutting a deal with an organization that adds greatly to the city's vitality, and I have great respect certainly for Dan Orem. I love Higante. I love, I've been to Giants games, they're a lot of fun, but my concern is with a corporation that is a corporate entity that is suing the city in a frivolous lawsuit, a corporate entity that is suing the city in a frivolous lawsuit that is essentially interfering with our ability to consummate a project that has the potential to be the most transformative economic development project in a generation in this city. And so, for that reason, I'm going to vote against this, and I don't understand why we would continue to engage in negotiations and deals with a corporation that wants to continue to sue the city in a frivolous lawsuit and do all it can to impair the city from moving forward. So, for that reason, I'll be voting no.
Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to publicly thank the San Jose Giants for working with my office over the last many, many years for many community benefit programs. So, thank you very much for your contribution to our community. I'll be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you. And I want to congratulate staff and the Arena Authority and Sharks Ice and the Giants for working on this and putting this all together. The San Jose Giants are really a great amenity for the families and people of San Jose, and there's a lot of families that can't afford to go spend money to see a Major League game somewhere. They just don't have that kind of money, and this offers a value that really provides an opportunity for almost any family to be able to come and enjoy baseball in a great environment. While I really am a supporter of getting a professional baseball team in San Jose, and I heartily support council member Liccardo's concerns, and I support our efforts in that regard, I think that we have to both provide amenities for our community while fighting for something else, and I don't think we can, you know, cut off an opportunity for our families to enjoy baseball in San Jose, and it's been a longstanding tradition, the Giants. I'm not willing to cut that off and wait for many years, and it's going to take time for us to get a professional baseball team here. It's obvious, it's taken a long time, and it's going to take more time in the courts. So, I don't think we can tell children and families just, you know, we're going to shut this facility down, it's going to be empty, and you're not going to have this anymore. So, we have to do both. So, I will support this, and while I am equally supporting our fight to get a professional team in San Jose, hopefully that's the As, but if it's not, it should be some professional team, and I support our continued fight there, but today I will support continuing our relationship with the San Jose Giants.
Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. In preparation for this meeting, my office and myself met with Higante, and I appreciate your time. I want to thank the San Jose Giants for the product they put out here for us each and every year. It's a great environment, and I enjoy it quite often, and also want to thank the folks from Sharks Ice for their investment in San Jose. These are two great facilities and great for San Jose. Thank you.
Councilmember Colra.
Thanks, Mayor, and I certainly appreciate Councilmember Liccardo's comments, and, you know, everyone up here has supported the efforts to bring Major League Baseball to San Jose, and more specifically, the As to San Jose, you know, that I don't think anyone's wavered at least in the desire, and I do see that there is some conflict certainly when you have a parent organization that may be making efforts to stop something like that from happening, which would certainly be, I think, by everyone's, by all accounts, at least from all our perspective, something that will benefit our city. What the San Jose Giants do offer, though, at the moment, in a stadium right now that's being used enthusiastically is still something that's a benefit to the city, and we do get sued a lot as a city, and oftentimes, we get sued by folks we continue to do business with, whether it's the building industry suing us, and we still work with developers on other interests in which maybe we can see eye to eye. I understand this is a little bit of a different scenario than that, but the reality is that, as council member Herrera indicated, what the San Jose Giants bring to the community is something different than other professional sports. It's much more of a community-type activity, a much more family-friendly activity, and so, I see that, I see that there is some tension, but a lot of the decisions we make have tension because we are a big city and we are oftentimes going to have competing interests that are vying for our attention and vying for our decisions to be made in a way that benefits them. But I see this as a separate issue, and when it comes to the value of the lease, there are a lot of community benefits that come from the San Jose Giants being there beyond simply what the value of the lease is. In fact, we have an option for land for the As to buy, which is far less the market value of what a house would be. So, we understand there's greater value when you have some other type of community benefit that's derived from an entertainment use like that, just like in this case with the Municipal Stadium, with the San Jose Giants using it, it's clearly not going to be at the same land value as a home, but the value that it does, that it is leased for, I think, is commensurate to the value that we get as a community.
Councilmember Oliverio.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for the gentleman from the San Jose Giants, if you could come up and say hello? Sir, would it be fair to say that in this whole topic that was brought up about the lawsuit, that you were powerless in the decision of the parent organization?
Yes, I am powerless. I did make some attempts to have the San Jose Giants removed. I was successful on the second lawsuit, and then the first lawsuit. I was successful on the second lawsuit, and then the first lawsuit, we just—it was discontinued to be a subject in the lease renewal, so it wasn't pursued any further.
And then, how do you individually, as yourself, reconcile the fact of operating on a day-to-day basis, having the San Jose Giants and the lawsuit with—you know, as an individual, how do you reconcile that in your own personal thought process?
The lawsuit's not part of my personal daily routine. It's something that transpired before I became head of the San Jose Giants, and I have never had anything to do with it, so it's not really in my frame of reference.
Thank you. I will be supporting the lease today for the value that the San Jose Giants bring. I understand there's other overarching concerns, but I really don't think this organization is responsible for the—you know, for the—frankly, the decisions made by the top office. And I think you've—as has been stated by many—you provide a lot of entertainment value to a lot of families in San Jose, and appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilor Camus.
Yeah, I too met with Dan Orem, and I shared Sam's concern. I asked him, and I'm comfortable supporting the Giants because I felt the answers were sincere, that the Giants weren't intentionally part of the lawsuit, and so I wanted to also support the effort to renew the lease. And I also want to thank them for their service to our community. We love having the Giants, we love having Higante. Thank you for coming out to our event in August. And again, I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
One final note and thanks, and as to the San Jose Arena Authority, Chris Morrissey's here. They played an important role here in keeping the parties together, talking and trying to work it out, as they have oversight authority over municipal stadium as well as the arena. With that, we have a motion to approve. On that motion, hold in favor. Opposed? Count one opposed. Councilman Liccardo, motion carries. We will now turn to item 4.2, memorandum of understanding with I-STAR San Jose LLC and others regarding a certain development on what's known as the I-STAR property. We will have a staff presentation on this. We'll take a few seconds to get people in place.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. To set the conversation on the I-STAR project, we wanted to first start and go back to where the city was in looking at the Hitachi campus in the Edenvale area. And so, on the overhead, we have put up the overall master plan that we did with Hitachi about 10 years ago, and it includes the Hitachi and I-STAR campuses on the property or on the map. What we really wanted to go and show was our original goals in doing the Hitachi master plan is, we wanted to master plan all of the lands that were originally part of the IBM campus in South San Jose. This is a property that has Cottle Road to the west, Monterey Highway or Monterey Road and the railroad to the north, and what is today Highway 85 on the south and east sides of the site. It is a really strong campus industrial area, but we recognized that over time that that was changing, and then with the new opportunities of light rail coming into this region, and then with Caltrain, that there were opportunities to rethink the original Hitachi campus. The city did a two-year planning effort with Hitachi. We're very fortunate with the foresight of their facilities team and Ken Kane Associates to do master planning with the city that really looked at what the goals for both the city and Hitachi were at the time, and that was to create a campus that was not based on the '60s but based on today. And that was about bringing amenities into this workplace. It was about bringing workforce housing in to the industrial area and bringing retail services in. And as a result of that, we created a really integrated campus that brought the retail, brought a variety of high-density housing, and importantly, open spaces that totally connected through the Hitachi campus that set the framework for now what is under construction with nearly 3,000 housing units, the vast majority of which are high-density apartments and condominiums that are going in, a Target store that is presently under construction, a series of neighborhood-serving shops, and soon-to-be Safeway store. This has really created a new home for Hitachi, and they've now started working on the master planning for building new campus industrial on their property. And so, as we now look at what goes on with this area, we realize that there was still this missing piece, the I-STAR property. And it has now come forward with a general plan change. We deferred from the general plan hearings last year, and as a part of staff's review and working with the developer, we went back to the same guiding principles that we started with—with Hitachi, and looked at how those pieces would fit together. And that's partly why I wanted to show this exhibit of how the land uses of employment, of retail, of open space, of high-density residential, all worked in the context of the transportation network that exists in this area and that we're building, the open space network that we've developed out here, and then again, of that overall interconnected community that is now under construction. So with that, we think it is the logical extension of what we set out to do when we did the Hitachi plan. The difference is, is that we now have a new general plan and that is very focused on where employment happens and where residential happens. And as a part of that, we noticed that the—we realized and recognized that we needed to go through and be very judicious about whatever was going to happen on this property. The original proposal on the site, and so have now gone to the detailed plan for the I-STAR campus, was originally over 1,000 housing units. The vast majority were single-family detached. It covered pretty much the entire property. In working with the developer and matching up our goals of the city's general plan about balance and about really providing that total complete community here, we have reduced the amount of housing in the site to 720 units. We have reduced the amount of single-family detached housing in the site to two blocks within the new community. The majority is high-density condo apartments with townhouses integrated through. We have importantly integrated into this a major retail component that fits to our goals about generating retail sales tax that was one of the long-term uses always planned for this property. And additionally, we've retained the ability to provide about 150,000 to 200,000 feet of office space on this site also, in a manner that is consistent with the Edenvale area. We did not assume high-density parking garage-type development. We really wanted to make sure we stayed true to what was economically feasible in this area. Nancy will talk some more about that in a minute. But it is one that—we really are an extension of what we've started with at the Hitachi campus. We have worked closely with Hitachi and Western Digital themselves to make sure that whatever goes on on the I-STAR property is complementary to their work, it matches the plans that they're doing on their portion of the property. And then lastly, as a part of doing the residential, partly why we pushed to reduce the amount of housing from 1,000 to 700 units is, with the new general plan, we do not add housing as a general plan amendment. We reallocate housing from other parts of the city. We are very comfortable with the 720 units that are proposed as a part of this proposal. We've looked at the housing we're building on the Hitachi campus, and to the extent there's some extra units of being able to use those, but we looked at the assumptions for housing on other planned villages in South San Jose, and looked at where we could go through and reallocate residential units off of those from South San Jose to this location. This is a site that's well-served by transit, so it is one that we took advantage of that versus some of the other sites that were more auto-centric. So we look back at what our guiding principles were with the general plan and what we set out to do with the urban villages and with, most importantly, what we did with the Hitachi plan altogether, and we think this hits on every one of those marks. And so, Nancy, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Joe. Just wanted to highlight a few more points and particular points of the memorandum of understanding you have before you. The developers had worked, just as a note, with the large retailer to underwrite the cost to make the site particularly attractive to the retailer, very much listening to the city and the desire for jobs first. Also, looking at the protections that staff and the attorney's office built into the MOU that would eventually guide a development agreement so that we're assured that jobs and revenues come first or in line with the development of the rest of the project. To that end, the MOU requires that the developers have all building permits for the retail prior to obtaining a subdivision map for the housing. Developers can't build more than 300 units of housing prior to completion of the retail shell. Developers are required to issue—at the issuance of building permits—for the issuance of building permits of the retail prior to the last phase of housing, and that they'll complete all infrastructure, including water, sewer, roadway, and power necessary for the office on site. So the idea is to make that office, as Joe has said many times, the first office that gets built newly in Edenvale. Developers are also required to provide $6 million for the build-out of Blossom Hill 101 interchange, and as noted in documentation that the attorney's office sent forward in the DA, the development agreement, staff and the developer will outline a process which ensures that there's monies upfront for the city to work with in terms of design, but then payment prior to completion of the overall development. In addition, the developers have committed 10-plus million dollars from the project to enhance the Major League Soccer stadium in four areas—the exterior—exterior of the—thank you—the exterior of the facility so that it gives it an iconic view, so that we will be proud long into the future to have that facility there, as the earthquakes win many, many tournaments and championships. A significant increase to the seating and risers that will also greatly add to the fan experience, but also make them much more quiet, which was a big concern of the adjacent neighborhood. Also, enhancing the level of concessions in the area, and finally, the scoreboard. As a further protection, the developers will provide letter of credit that ensure that, should for any reason the dollars from the funds that were to go to the stadium don't come to the city for the stadium, it are given to the city for the cities—at the city's discretion. Then, one last point. Outside the scope of the memorandum of understanding, the developers are working with the housing department to pay in lieu fees in support of affordable housing, and that's anticipated to range from 10 to 13 million dollars. With that, staff is available for any other questions.
Thank you. Councilor Colra.
Do you want to take a public comment first?
Okay. We have some requests to speak. We'll do that first. David Cavell.
Mayor Reed, council members, I just wanted to thank you for your time today. As the president of the San Jose Earthquakes, we're very favorable and supportive of this endeavor. We're obviously very excited about the stadium that we're building right now. If you went by Coleman, you could see that the steel is actually going to be going up this week, which is very exciting, and we're building in line with the PD permit. But obviously, any enhancement that we're talking about here could make a more iconic stadium that can help provide for the quality of life here in San Jose. So we're obviously strongly in favor of it and excited about the proposition. Thank you.
Amy Wall.
Raises a couple of issues, one of which is the discussion about the interchange—101 interchange—was a little light on the total cost. The city's going to have to put forth 10 and a half million dollars from transportation funds. So this comes at a time when the Transportation Department is looking at, what, a billion-dollar request for 2016 for either parcel taxes or for sales taxes. Then we get to the taking for affordable housing, the exaction. And I'm going to read from this Supreme Court lawsuit briefed by California Building Industry Associates, quote, "One of the principal purposes of the takings clause is to bar government from enforcing some people alone to bear public burdens which, in all fairness and justice, should be borne by the public as a whole," period, close quote. Quote, "At times when limited general tax revenues compete for important public purposes, local governments face the temptation to shift those public burdens onto individual property owners who can be leveraged through permitting processes to meet the public need even when property owners' projects do not proximately cause existing needs," period, close quotes. Now, this is a taking. You might have to pay the money back, but we then turn to a United States Supreme Court case is Coontz versus St. John's River Water Management District, where it says, "In lieu fees utterly commonplace, and they are functionally equivalent to other types of land use exactions." In other words, a taking. Somebody can just reach in, like the city of San Jose, could take your money by asserting a land use decision. Now, with reference to vested rights versus employee rights, you're giving developers in this project vested rights, but then you want to attack city employees' vested rights. So that is non sequitur to me. I think that there has to be some discussion as to why the 10 and a half million dollars for traffic mitigation was not discussed earlier by staff. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony. Councilor Colra.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I want to thank you and Ruwir Kuhn and your staff, as well as Joseph Apaku, my former chief of staff, who I know worked closely with Ru on the project. And of course, I want to thank Joe Horadell, Nancy Klein, and the city's staff, who have put in a tremendous amount of work of getting us where we are. And of course, I've had many productive meetings with Ed Storm, and I want to thank him for being so cooperative and understanding the city's position from day one, and it's one that I believe—at least, I tried my best, and I believe the mayor's office also—in order to be consistent with the staff in ensuring that we didn't just have kind of like an offshoot of the Hitachi project, but we actually had something here that was going to be a continuation of what we're trying to do with the Hitachi project. It was something that was very clear from Joe early on, and I was absolutely in agreement with it. And I know Ed heard us say that many, many times, that the I-STAR project is and should be developed in a manner as if we had the whole package together at one time in order to develop. You know, when I got into office, of course, Hitachi was ready to go, the economy wasn't ready to go, and so it fell flat and dormant for a while, and now we're starting to see it rise up from the dirt that's been there for so many years. Thankfully, Hitachi, in being a very good partner, built the parks first, but that original plan did not really either anticipate or speculate as to what was going to happen with the I-STAR property. And when we had the opportunity to have a discussion about the I-STAR property, at no point were we willing to do that without a contemplation of what the entire region was going to look like from Loews to I-STAR and everything in between. And so, I'm very happy with the final result, because I think what we have here is truly a community that is achieving the goals of what we're trying to create in San Jose. Now, it may not be the 2050 urban village that we may envision, but it is a 2013 village, and it's something that may have been very hard to believe just 10 years ago could have been developed in this part of town. I remember frequenting this area a lot when I was a child, and IBM was there, and going with my friends whose parents worked there, and, you know, playing ping pong and softball and all that at the IBM property, and that's all we knew for a very long time. And I think what we have here is an opportunity to think differently, to do differently, to bring our housing and our jobs closer together, bring attractive housing. As Joe mentioned, very little of it is detached, so we are bringing density that is not the norm in this part of town. And one of the most interesting aspects of it that I'm most appreciative of are the greenways that really connect this property with Hitachi's site, allow it to really—I mean, it's very close to the San Luis, the light rail, for those that haven't been out there. So it really gives a real opportunity. Sometimes we build— Sometimes we build, you know, within a mile or half mile of public transit and assume people are going to use it. In this case, it's practical, it's close, and I really do think that it's going to be a great amenity for those that live here at the I-Star property. Additionally, we have Hitachi already doing some wonderful things, including building the pedestrian overcross into the Caltrain stop, which is right down the street from the I-Star property. So now you're really creating some great synergy with what Hitachi is doing, what I-Star is planning to do, so that it's all going to flow together. So I really have great appreciation for where we have come, considering where we started. And I want to thank Ed Storm for that. I certainly want to thank our partners at Hitachi for continuing to be part of the discussion, part of the dialogue from day one in creating a property that I think is going to add to what I believe Hitachi's already starting to do in this part of town, which has really been a part of town that's lacked in retail dramatically. It's lacked in interesting and new housing. And the connections, you know, and I can speak for myself, growing up in this part of town, that although we build and have a lot of public transit, the connections and the honest, pragmatic, practicality of us using it without getting in our car is very challenging. Here we have an opportunity to create a community where it's very real. Of course, bringing Costco is huge, and I think that it cannot be understated the value of Costco coming here to South San Jose. If anyone's been to the Costco in Alma Den or One Off Center Road, you will understand why this Costco is so needed and so desperately needed. And for those in South San Jose that may be going to Morgan Hill because they find it an easier or better shopping experience, we can bring them back home now and bring that tax revenue back home as well. And so I'm certainly very excited about that. And finally, on the jobs piece, I really want to also thank the planning staff for being, and the Office of Economic Development, for being very clear that we needed to have, we needed to have the opportunity to bring some more employment jobs, office jobs, to the Edenvale Technology Park. We have some wonderful spaces already, especially on the other side of 101. This brings the, this is an opportunity where we can bring some new office into a community so that we have a really great likelihood that it will actually be filled. Now, on the earthquakes aspect of it, and this is something that I've said all along, I know that the mayor has agreed with it. I know that Joe has been very clear on this, that we were not going to agree to anything on I-Star because we may be getting something for a stadium, because we may be getting money to enhance the stadium. This project and this proposal had to stand alone, and I believe it does. That being said, I do think that it's an extra, pretty significant bonus that we're going to be getting over $10 million to improve our earthquake stadium, which is already a $70 million private investment. I think that this is a great opportunity for us to add some features, which I know the earthquakes had wanted to do anyway, but they needed the extra resources to be able to do it. So I think it's great that we're going to be able to use funds that can otherwise go anywhere, that the developers can use to build another project somewhere else. Instead, that money's going to stay in our community in order to create a signature project right down the street from the earthquake stadium. I think we're going to have an iconic football stadium. We had the opportunity to create an iconic soccer stadium as well, which I think will be a great complement and will work wonderfully together to create a sports mecca here in San Jose, which I know that we're all very excited to have the opportunity to do. So I want to thank the earthquakes and the collaboration that's being done here in order to make that possible. And finally, the last couple of points. One is there is a significant amount of funding that's going to go to the 101 Blossom Hill project. Not all the, it's a 20 million, 22 million dollar project that's necessary. Certainly, the mitigation necessary for this project doesn't meet all the 22 million dollar requirement, but it meets a significant portion of it, over $6 million of it, which gets us about halfway to making those upgrades at Blossom Hill 101 possible. As we're watching 101, both off Tully and now Capital improve or moving southward, as we continue to add housing, added jobs, we'll get the opportunity to upgrade an old interchange sometime, I hope, in the near future as we identify other sources of funds in order to do that. And of course, I appreciate the affordable housing in Lufy's. As it's no surprise to everyone, it's been a big topic of discussion for all of us, the need for more affordable housing and funds in order to make it happen. And so, you know, having these fees will certainly go a long way to us finding other opportunities to create affordable housing in our city. And so you can tell, I hope that I'm very excited about the opportunity to move forward with this MOU. I believe that this project will be of a great benefit, certainly to District 2 and to South San Jose, but more importantly, to our city, especially when you take into account the amenities that will be coming to, the additional funds for amenities and upgrades to the earthquake stadium. So with that, Ms. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Back in November of 2011, the council approved our 2040 general plan after years and years of work. And we dealt specifically in there with this particular I-Star project because it was one of the open items left over. And we noted that any development proposal for this property would have to closely align itself with the principles of the general plan, urban village, and extend the plan currently under development on the adjacent Hitachi property. And that means promoting active, walkable, bicycle-friendly, transit-oriented, mixed-use urban setting for jobs growth and new housing. In June of 2012, Councilmember Colra and I met with Ed Storm and Keith Wolf and Ken Kay, trying to figure out how you could do a plan on this site that would meet all the criteria that the council had set. And I think this site is a good example of both the good fortune of some elements and a model of some elements for other urban villages as we struggle to figure out exactly how to implement those. We were fortunate that we had a small number of developers who were prepared to spend significant money to plan and to build additional infrastructure, which they are going to do on this site. And we were fortunate to have the transportation infrastructure already in place with a couple of light rail stations and a Caltrain station that we could build around. And I guess maybe we're fortunate that this is really an island surrounded by transportation infrastructure. And so we have a distinct place to work with, to try to make the elements come together. But I want to thank our staff for spending a lot of time on it, and Ken Kay and his staff are trying to figure out how to make this all work and be integrated because I think the outcome certainly is something that we should support. And as we talked about in our November, this year's study session, how do we pay for the infrastructure was the, one of the big questions of that. And we don't know the answer for all urban villages, but we certainly have a model here where it's been mostly paid for by private sector in order to create an urban village, although certainly substantial public sector infrastructure is in place to give us the opportunity. So I think we've got something that's going to be a great asset for the community, and there's a lot to be desired here. And the only question I have is, is it always going to be Hitachi? And maybe we should think about a name like Edenvale or something because it could be the IBM-Hitachi Western Digital Urban Village or some other name in the future. So I'll leave that for Councilmember Colra and his constituents to figure out what would be a really good name for it. With that, I would certainly urge my colleagues to support it. Councilmember Camus.
Yeah, I also want to thank staff and for working on this. This looks like the optimal idea here for, especially with all the public transportation networks next to it. Hopefully, people will start using our light rail, especially in that area, because, you know, those buses go, I mean, those trains go in and out empty most of the time. I'm also delighted, and I can't say how much I, I, I mean, I'm delighted, and I think my constituents are also delighted to have Costco coming in. The constituents in Alma Den look forward to having a little less traffic near the interchange. So thank you very much to I-Star, and thank you very much for this project. You know, I just want to let you know, you know, developers have to come in with 720 units after a whole lot of units are being built next to them. It's a big risk. They're risking $115 million at least on this development. Who knows by the time they get them built if the market's still in the same place? So I want to thank them for taking the risk and investing in our community because we need people who take risks like this. And again, thank you for your efforts, and I will definitely be supporting this.
Councilmember Herrera.
I wish I could be looking at this thing as one big project, the Hitachi Village. It's a, it's a, and that is how I'm actually going to be voting on it. I'm looking at this as a total project because I think that it does have some really good elements in it. As already been said, the transportation, you know, often we look at areas where we want to create jobs or we want to put a community, and if there isn't transportation infrastructure there, trying to amass the ability, the money to put train, to put rail lines or that kind of significant infrastructure in a place where it isn't now is just huge. You know, even trying to complete the light rail line in District 8 from Capital to Eastridge, a very small segment is just, it's been very, very difficult to advance that forward. So the fact that you have jobs and housing, and we're going to get more housing and jobs in an area that's surrounded by transportation, cannot be understated. It's significant. And companies now that are looking to expand are looking increasingly to do their expansions along rail lines because they understand the importance of being able to have employees be able to access that kind of transportation. Because we're not going to be able to build additional freeways that are going to take care of the capacity of the growth in population that we're going to see in this Bay Area and Silicon Valley. So the transportation piece of this is really important, and it's one of the reasons why I'm going to support it. I'm not a fan of converting industrial land to housing, almost under any circumstances. And I've voted no on it plenty of times, and I've written about it, and it's just really critical that we achieve our jobs goal. So the things I'm also looking for in this are what are the protections to make sure that the jobs really happen and that if Hitachi, who has jobs now, goes away, how do we make sure that doesn't turn into housing? So I want staff to talk to me about that because I want to make sure that the jobs we're looking at, the office that we're building the infrastructure for, we don't have the office yet, how do we make sure that does become office? That if Hitachi goes away, that those remain jobs and that we make sure that we're going to get all of those job-related things. And before you answer that, I want to also, though, compliment the developer on the types of housing that are being built, the density that's being built there. So we're not, we are doing things in a different way now in San Jose. We're not just building a lot of single-family houses. We are looking at density, and we're putting density in new places and in places in this village. So I think that's a different kind of thing. Also, the retail that's already been talked about, the parks, the kinds of other things, allowing people to have transportation and to have jobs near where they live. Those are all really good things and components of this village. So talk to me about how we don't lose the jobs.
So on the jobs piece and how to go and really see those happen, that was a real concern of staff as we looked at the I-Star site. And that's why we really focused on increasing the amount of land that was retained for the office redevelopment, or office R&amp;D type uses, because we wanted to make sure it was able to be developed with surface parking so it did not incur higher costs. We wanted to make sure that the amount of square footage, the 200-plus thousand square feet we're talking about, was pretty conventional-type construction. It creates the opportunity for much higher intensities as the market moves to accommodate that. But we wanted to go and really make sure it was market-ready today. And so that's the, the focus was really around how to eliminate obstacles and cost on that land so it was ready to go. And that in creating kind of the new neighborhood here, same as what we're now seeing on the Hitachi campus itself, it is treating it differently than the rest of Edenvale. It is creating a new niche in the market there, and so we think it allows it to maybe move faster than other parts of Edenvale. On the main campus of Hitachi, I think there's a couple of things that we've done that will bring along the employment we want to see happen on the property. One was, as a part of doing all the redevelopment on the outer edges of their property, there was a tremendous amount of infrastructure that was rebuilt that was 50 years old that allows them to continue to function effectively, efficiently out there. There's a tremendous amount of manufacturing goes on there today, but they are retrenching as they have their merger with Western Digital announced and is now being implemented, that they are looking at how does this campus fit in with their other holdings here in the United States. And part of our strategy has been is to make this the obvious place for them to go through and grow those jobs. And so we're really happy to see that they are now looking at their capital acquisitions or improvements, budgeting, to start building research, development, administrative buildings on the property. That part of it's the consolidation of the facility they have in Evergreen on the YB properties, but to bring that on site, but to do it in a manner that really sets the new direction for this campus overall. They're also working right now on a major refreshing of the buildings that they realize that they're not competitive in the marketplace for attracting workers. It's really, they are competing with Google. And so, you know, the campus is, you know, is a dated campus. So they're working right now on a major renovation of the campus that goes through and bringing amenities back in. So they are also looking at this as putting down roots. And that was a concern of ours at the city when we did the original master plan, that we didn't want it to turn into a total residential community. And so we really looked at what were the things infrastructure-wise that we could do? What were the things we could do in how we designed it so that it was viable in the marketplace for continued manufacturing and for future growth? And so I think we hit those marks. One of the things that also happened is Great Oaks became their new front door. IBM's front door used to be Cottle, but today they don't have a front door still. It's kind of a little bit lost. So that's one of the projects we're doing also with them right now, is to build the grand entry into their campus because they very much want to project that image that this is the home of Hitachi and what they do with the disk drive manufacturing.
And in terms of any zoning or land use in place that would prohibit the conversion of that land to housing, that's kind of what I was looking for, too. I mean, I hope this gets, I hope this village becomes the poster child for having jobs near housing and transit. I mean, if it can happen here with all the right elements, I mean, we're putting them all in one place. This should be wildly successful.
And the general plan for the Hitachi portion of the site restricts where the industrial is to industrial uses. We have a development agreement with them that prohibits them from asking for a general plan amendment on their property until they've hit certain job triggers. So it, we, both collectively, both parties, Hitachi and the city, said that we are, this is where we're going, and this is the deal. And that we weren't going to let kind of the parties come back and start unwinding the deal without achieving on both sides the ledger.
And so again, I'm looking at this in that total sense, and I will be supporting this I-Star piece as a part of the whole. If it were just by itself and the other pieces weren't there, I would vote no. But I do think, I see it as a total picture. And again, the transportation being a very critical element, that I'm trying to think of another place in the city that has this kind of transportation ring around it where we're doing a village. So this is a special case, and congratulations, Councilmember Colra, it's in your district, and I'll be supporting this.
Councilmember Licardo.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll also be supporting it. I just had a couple of quick questions. One, Joe, the affordable housing calculation, I've continued to see a range of 10 to 13 and a half million, and my understanding was the unit count is pretty well-known. Is that right?
That is correct. The 720, I think, we're pretty set on.
Okay. So does that get us to a fixed number for affordable housing? Without knowing exactly what that number is, I just want to know if it is entirely set by the RDA calculation?
Yeah, I see Jackie coming down with a lifesaver.
I'm just trying to understand. It sounds as though, you know, I read the contract, and it doesn't look like it's part of the agreement. So I'm guessing this is really being set by the project area requirement. Is that right?
Exactly. Jackie Morales, Assistant Director for the Housing Department. The reason why you're seeing the range... The reason why you're seeing the range is because the developer has not fully declared yet what the tenure type is going to be.
I see.
So the lower part of the range was for what we know the for-sale component will be. The remaining units, they haven't yet to decide whether it will be rental or for-sale.
Okay. And those project area requirements continue to live on beyond the death of redevelopment?
Absolutely. They continue to live on.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie. I just had one quick question for Ed Storm. Ed, if you had a moment? If you had a moment, Ed, I just want to ask one quick question about the design and the layout of the site. And thanks for all the great work you do in our city. Recognizing we've had challenges in the past with fantastic cafeterias or building campuses like Adobe's that unfortunately prevent or dissuade employees from getting outside the campus to actually engage in the surrounding village or downtown, I'm just curious if there had been discussions with Hitachi about how you might be able to provide amenities that would be employees serving and essentially save them from building that in their campus to try to draw employees off-campus? Has that been part of the discussion at all, or has you been planning this?
Well, I take a first crack at it, and then, Ed, you can jump in. One of the things in talking with the Western Digital folks in how we design the campus, we put gates all the way around because it is a secured campus. But the design of the retail and how we stub streets into it and the types of retail that we're putting out on Cottle are... There's a lot of restaurant, food service, and service-type retail uses. They are very excited, and as a part of the marketing that they're now doing with the employees inside Hitachi is about what's coming across the fence so that they're aware of what's going there. They clearly are going to build some campus-type facilities, amenities, inside the fence, but they really do see that what we're building around on the outside is an amenity to their employees also and a reason for people to work there. So I think you'll see it's a very symbiotic relationship.
Okay.
That's been our experience also. As you know, we had a big campus for Brocade on North First Street. And if you have the amenities that we're providing here, both with Target and Safeway and the shops, and now with the other major retailer, it creates a stimulus for campus people to have a total environment for their workers. They can't provide all that onsite. So if we can provide that along with transportation, it accelerates their interest. It distinguishes you from what I call commodity real estate. We have some unique qualities to it.
Okay, great.
So it'll help ultimately.
So you're having those conversations with Western Digital's real estate people about, hey, we'll take on the amenities, you guys can go light on those?
Constantly.
Okay, that's great. Because I know Western...
I should thank Joe, too, for my degree in urban village planning, so I appreciate that. I'm not sure I could define one, but I think I can recognize one.
It's like the old Supreme Court standard, right? Yeah. I guess, you know, my fundamental concern, I guess, is similar to what Rosa expressed. You know, Western Digital may decide to move, expand, go somewhere else, and we want to have a campus site that's going to be attractive with surrounding amenities for a future tech employer as well. So I look forward to seeing this all develop and happy to support the project.
Well, if people who have the theory about building a place is important to attracting workers are correct, this campus will explode with workers because I think it's certainly going to be a place very unusual on Silicon Valley. Councilmember Oliverio.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Joe for, you know, massaging the project the way through the processes you had talked about historically, and Mr. Hunter, or is it Mr. Storm, for, you know, putting proposal together and obviously spending a lot of time on it. And inherently, those are things that you're used to doing, and obviously thankful for the storage industry, so there's jobs here. And then, Rick, we do these MOUs when the applicant asks, or do we initiate the MOUs?
It depends. I mean, both. Really, this one, I think, was sort of mutual because I think the parties wanted to get something in writing out of business terms. But as stated in the memo and the MOU itself, it's a non-binding agreement pending, secret review, and a development agreement coming forward.
And you mentioned the C-word, "sequo." I assume we're going to be okay here?
We are doing a project-level environmental impact report for the site. It'll be the second one that we've done. So that will be coming forward with the general plan and development agreement.
And, Joe, you mentioned the housing here, reduced housing in other areas. Was that reducing housing opportunities in the southern part of San Jose?
Correct.
Okay. So then, potential strip mall shopping center would not be able to have the X amount of units or something like that?
Yes. We looked at some of the smaller centers along Sanitarisa Boulevard and then a little bit to the north, I think up to... Drawing a total brink now. It's where 85 and Blossom Hill Road, kind of that area, and pulled units out of kind of a little bit here, a little bit there. So we think it still leaves a viable amount of residential on those, but it keeps it all within South San Jose, so we're not changing the overall traffic in the city.
Fair enough. And then, when you look at this side and you look at the map of San Jose, and then you look at another area that comes in discussion, for example, Evergreen, would you say this is a better site for job location or the Evergreen site?
I think it's... They're both good, and they're for different reasons. Here, the access to transit and other jobs around it, it does make it a good job location. And so that's one of the things why we've tried to protect those. I think the other things in looking at areas like Evergreen, part of our strategy is to go and reduce the amount of trips or miles that people have to travel to their jobs. And the more that we can bring jobs throughout the city, that's a good thing. And so that's why I think those are important in Evergreen. I think from the market acceptance, this is a place that's probably easier to build jobs.
And would you say the density in the housing in this proposal is more market-based or more Joe's wishlist?
It is definitely more Joe's wishlist. It is at 37 units to the acres where we ended up. We started, I think, at probably about 15.
Fair enough. And then, I do appreciate my comments of my councilmember, Councilmember Colra, who does have all the history of the area, representing the area, and knowing very much the needs and wants of the community. And I respectfully say that I think this is a large project that denotes, you know, major attention. I think I've heard it from other people that this project basically validates rezonings and that this will be used as justification. I did vote to sell the land for soccer, what I believed was at a market or below-market price, unattached to this item. So that's something I'm a little hesitant to. I understand where the value point is for that measure, but it's certainly a slippery slope as to what you present. So I won't support the MOU today. I'll be open to see, though, if, as this comes forward for further, that, you know, my viewpoint of a village is true density, and I think that's what's needed. We have a lot of housing stock. That's the standard, single-family home style, and I think the density is really what gets us there, especially for the value that if I'm going to convert an area that I think is better suited for jobs than other parts of the city, then I would imagine the density I'd like to see would be a bit higher, especially if we're touting it's next to transportation, et cetera. But I know what's proposed here may change, so I'll look forward to seeing what may or may not change as this comes to fruition. And with that, I definitely like the graphics, so thank you, and I enjoy the roundabouts.
Councilmember Colra.
Actually, if we could add, perhaps, Joe, make a note?
Yeah. So I did want to clarify, as Ed rightly pointed out, when you asked, is this market-rate or Joe's vision of the world? This really is the general plan's view of how we think about those kinds, exactly as you said. Land is our most precious commodity, and so we shouldn't just think of it as something to burn through. It's how to be thoughtful about what is the right density, the right mix of uses, whether it's job density or residential density. And so that is the foundation of the text of the general plan.
Councilmember Colra.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a couple last points. One is, and if you can put up the map of the entire project, this project as well as the entire Hitachi project, yeah? And I think this gives you a sense, we see the greenways, and I believe that that's also another amenity for those that are working there. And there are already a lot of people currently working on that campus that go for walks, and there's trails, there's basketball courts now, there's tennis courts that were all created. Hitachi was generous enough to build all that years before they even started building the housing and retail just recently. And so when we consider the miles of pedestrian and bicycle trails and walkways that are being incorporated into this, and you add to that the amenities that are going to be available, because I think there is certainly a fear of the encroachment upon the industrial land. If you look to the north, or sorry, to the east of, at the top of the map, the east of Highway 101, you see the Edenville Technology Park there. But it's also just south of the project as well. Not only is Kaiser Hospital there, but if you see Villa del Oro, that's also part of the old Edenville Technology Park that has some very vibrant companies that are growing and manufacturing. And so there's no... There certainly hasn't been an intention to encroach upon the industrial land. However, I believe, just as we're doing in North San Jose, by bringing more housing closer to jobs and a greater variety of housing closer to jobs, I believe that this project will do the same, and in fact, make it more likely that this campus is going to remain a job creator and going to remain industrial and not convert because there's actually an attraction to it now being a place of employment. And we know more and more as we see, you know, companies going to San Francisco or coming to downtown San Jose or other locations, that employees are looking for places to work that aren't just in the middle of an office complex. They want to be surrounded by more vibrancy, by trails, by stores, by shops, be able to run to Costco at lunchtime or to Target, get a bite to eat, and do that while walking. And so that's what this brings, that I believe makes it that all-inclusive-type project. And I just want to make mention, a comment to what Councilmember Oliverio said in terms of these kinds of conversions, and make mention and reference to the memo from Councilmember Rocha, because I think Councilmember Rocha brings up an excellent point in that I think we do a disservice when we just look at a project and just say kind of a black letter, yes or no. We can do it, we can't do it, and that's it. In this case, I think this was a great exercise in the possibilities of what could be there. We had the developer that came to us with a plan and vision that was different than what we had. But we... I believe Joe, Nancy, the mayor's office was very respectful in declining that initial proposition, but saying, you know what? Let's still work to see what can be possible here. I think that we should do that more often, and as Councilmember Rocha indicates in his memo, have that open mind to understand that we don't know... We don't know what may be around the corner that's going to be an improvement to a particular community or to a particular development or undeveloped land. And to presume that just by doing A, B, or C, we're destroying employment lands is not necessarily the case. I don't believe that's the case here. I think not only are we bringing a lot of tax revenue to the city, but we're making the existing employment land much more palatable, which has... That has that intrinsic value in itself. And so the... And I didn't mention earlier that Hunter Storm's also the developer of the commercial property on Hitachi, which made it a lot easier for us to kind of create that sense of place and to make those connections because Hitachi is the overarching developer of the adjacent property, and having the commercial property on one end and the commercial property on the other being developed by the same developer, I think, made it easier for them to understand what the city was going for. And so there's a lot of synergy that was created here, and I think that we do a disservice by having, you know, these clear lines that can never be crossover as opposed to goals and objectives that we can meet in a variety of ways. And I think this is one of those examples.
Councilmember Licerto.
Just one last question to follow up on. With regard to the aggregate square footage office retail, it was 250,000, is that right?
Two-hundred-and-sixty thousand.
Two-hundred-and-sixty thousand.
As identified.
And how does that differ from the original allocation of square footage that we had before we were contemplating this voyage plan, this conversion?
It was 400,000, but low-density.
There's been several different iterations on the I-STAR property. There originally was an R&amp;D component across the whole site. Later, we came back to put commercial, combined industrial, commercial on the property and took a number of the square feet off. So Nancy's remembering about 400,000 feet. I was thinking of the pure office piece was almost double of that, but it... We retained it in Edenvale, and when we went to the commercial component, it kind of separated it.
The current zoning on it is IP and industrial, commercial, CIC.
Okay. So I'm just trying to understand. We went from 800,000 to 260,000?
Plus the retail.
With the retail and then the office that we're keeping, it is a reduction. And then the 800, that's a number that I'm pulling out of the back of my mind. So we can come back... Definitely, when we come back with the general plan amendment, that'll be part of what we're bringing forward.
Right. Yeah, I expect we'll have a lively discussion about that because my recollection, you know, when we were talking about this several years ago, was we were retaining job capacity and we were densifying in some way.
Right.
I'm just trying to understand how that's reflected in square footage. I would expect it would be likely a one-to-one. It sounds like that's not the case.
No, is that this is... Definitely would be less square footage than we saw previously, but it is one that we've retained that square footage, just like the housing. We've moved it, and it's still here in Edenvale. So in some ways, we've intensified what was previously planned.
Okay. I look forward to having that discussion at the GPA.
Yeah, so we'll explain where all that went and how that happens.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that concludes the public testimony. We have the motion made by Councilmember Colra. On that motion, Hall in favor. Opposed. One opposed. One opposed, Councilmember Oliverio opposed. Motion carries. We'll now move from south to north as we take up Item 4.3, North San Jose Traffic Impact Fee Incentive Program. Again, I think we'll have a staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Kim Wallace, Economic Development Director. We're going to open hands and eye with some brief remarks. We're here because last September 24th, Council directed us to return by the end of the year with a number of different actions related to the North San Jose area development policy. And the core intent is to support very, very large catalytic development projects in the near term in North San Jose. There's five elements. The first two is the Traffic Impact Fee Incentive Program, reducing... Setting the fee at $2 a square foot for any build to suit office R&amp;D campus of over 1 million square feet. Item C is a staff recommendation that requires that the new development that receives this $2 fee would participate in the business cooperation program. And there's a memo out from the mayor and others modifying this to a good-faith effort to participate. Item D is also staff-initiated, and what this does is it would allow projects that are near North San Jose but outside of the boundary area to mitigate their traffic impact by payment into the infrastructure improvement program of the traffic impact fee. And Item E follows Council's direction to provide additional flexibility with respect to the urban design guidelines for campus-style development. So just to recount a brief history of the Traffic Impact Fee Incentive. The fee schedule was set in 2005 to fund traffic infrastructure improvements required to mitigate traffic impacts caused by intensification in North San Jose. This fee started out at about $10.44, and it escalates annually. It's currently at $13.54. Now, the original intent was that by streamlining and providing the certainty benefits for projects of using the North San Jose EIR would make this very attractive to companies. However, at this point in time, we all understand that that original fee schedule has rendered North San Jose uncompetitive. So the first action Council took was in 2012, which was to set the fee at $5 for developments of over 100,000 per square foot. And that initial incentive program was fully subscribed and clearly helped with projects like Samsung and the Cisco Intensification Effort and the Ellis Partners Development. So the $2 rate proposed now, as you can see, is for a million square feet or more with participation in the city business cooperation. with participation in the city business cooperation program. And we're authorizing up to 4 million square feet. So just a word about the Business Cooperation Incentive Program. You'll recall that council adopted this in 2009 and in partnership with a local company, it ensures that the 1% of the 8.75% sales tax gets allocated to San Jose. And this works for construction projects and the purchase of materials as well as ongoing purchases out of state of equipment and machinery. Now, I just want to emphasize, this could have significant positive fiscal impact to our city and to the company. So a project like the Samsung building will generate over $700,000 for our city. We estimate a project on the order of 2 million square feet could result as, in over $1 million to our city. And just a word about the North San Jose Urban Design Guidelines. You recall the purpose of the guidelines was to help in the transition of North San Jose from essentially an industrial park to a more intensified, mixed-use, exciting area. And the intent was to provide guidance to projects so that all the projects add up to creating a great place. So we have done as you directed and we've amended the North San Jose policy document to provide this flexibility, especially for campus style developments. But staff believes it's important to recognize that the intent of the urban design guidelines remain to ensure that the projects over time add up to really reflect the vision of North San Jose as a great place for employees. We're going to need more time on a few of the items you gave us last September. So what we're proposing is that we'll return in March of 2014 with these three items and we'll preview them in the CED committee in February. So we'll provide an update on implementation of the North San Jose policy to date, especially on the specific issue of transportation improvement priorities and how we're going to adapt our plans and our funding strategy to address the gaps caused by the fee, setting the fee at $2. We're also going to discuss potential refinements to the urban design guidelines as you directed us and analyze whether a more comprehensive review of the North San Jose policy is warranted. And through all this, we've been in very close collaboration with DOT and Hans. And he's going to make a few remarks now on our conceptual thinking of the shift in the North San Jose Transportation Plan Funding.
Thank you, Kim. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Hans Larson, Director of Transportation. Wanted to just quickly give the council sort of a preview of the direction that we're proposing to take the North San Jose Development Plan. As council is aware, that the high fees in North San Jose, particularly on jobs, have become a constraint in attracting development to North San Jose. And when the plan was adopted in 2005 and officially approved in 2006, it was done with, you know, some contribution from a redevelopment agency, which is no longer with us, a very small contribution from regional funds. And the plan was largely intended to be funded with development fees. 80% of the improvements of over $500 million transportation package funded by development fees. What we are looking to evolve the plan to is one in which we reduce the development fees primarily on the job side so that we create a jobs-first strategy for North San Jose and move to what really what we're finding is happening around Silicon Valley. Other cities are relying on future regional funds to take care of regional improvements. So we're looking at bringing forward to the council and the committee, have a little more thought and coordination to put into this. It's obviously an item that, you know, requires some attention from, from the council. So certainly, I don't know, the last council meeting of the calendar year isn't probably the best time to do this, but we're working on doing, working together. We've already had preliminary discussions with the VTA on this strategy. Kind of the new direction we're looking at is a plan that reduces the development contribution from 80% to in the order of 40% and largely making up for that in future funds from regional sources. So I wanted to give you that, just kind of quick highlight. And I think, you know, we're ready to take any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. We gave direction to bring this to us back in September. So here we are with the implementing work that needs to be done. One of the other directions we gave was to come back in the budget process with other ways that we could help cover some of the needs for transportation in North San Jose Transportation Fund so that work continues. And part of that is what Hans is talking about in terms of looking at the overall approach. I think the important thing to remember here is if we don't build Phase 1, we don't have to worry about Phase 2, 3, or 4. If we don't build Phase 1, we don't have to worry about being a job center. And what we have now is an impediment to getting the jobs growth that drives North San Jose and has for many years driven the city's economic development. So we need to figure this out and that's why we've been doing this, is to tweak the plan and to modify the requirements, both on the design requirement side as well as the fees side. We've had some success in that with the Samsung project and the Perry Ariaga project that is, is in processing. And so, we can have an impact on it, but we can't just sit by and hope that someday somebody will come to our city and want to develop. We have to be aggressive to capture the opportunity that we have here in the valley. But let's face it, there's a heck of a lot more development going on in Silicon Valley that's not happening in San Jose than is happening in San Jose. We've got to compete with the rest of the valley. And part of that is on price, part of it is on location. We can't do much about location, but we can modify the price with these fees. And we have to be cautious about the design requirements that also drive up the price and make it less desirable. So we're making some modest changes along the way, but they're having a significant impact and we're seeing lots of renewed interest in North San Jose as the valley continues to grow. I think the big unknown is how long will the national economy stay positive? And I'm hoping for a couple more good years. And I think we'll see a lot of development with these changes and these incentives. The way that we're doing it, we've certainly got a lot of interest now. Question is, can we deliver on the interest and get the projects underway? And I want to thank our staff for working at the speed of business when we do get the opportunity on the projects because having sat in many sessions with people who are interested in developing in San Jose, the key factor has always been, can we deliver on a timeline that they have? Because if we can't, they have to go someplace else. And our staff has done a great job, notwithstanding all the things that people said about Joe last night. He really has done a great job. And the staff that support him have done a terrific job managing what is now, just on our major project plus in excess of $2 billion while being understaffed. And so, we appreciate that. And we're, of course, trying to get them more work with these changes. Hopefully, they'll have more work and also more staff. Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor. And I too wanted to thank staff and also really appreciate the recommendations that you're bringing forth to us. As the economy continues to improve, San Jose needs to be a prime location for new businesses to build and also to relocate. As indicated in the, in the staff memo, the North San Jose Traffic Impact Fee Incentive Program has been very successful in stimulating near-term development activity in North San Jose with different, different companies like Samsung, semiconductor, Cisco System, and some of the others. But obviously, since then, we haven't seen a lot of new development. So I think that with this new approach of reducing the impact fee to $2 per square foot, it's really going to generate a lot of new business in North San Jose, which is what we're hoping for. As, in order for San Jose to bounce back from the recession, I think bringing business, new business is very essential. And I really appreciate the memo from the city attorney's office. But as the mayor indicated, I think that we need to focus on Phase 1 and really do everything we can to generate more developments in North San Jose. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the memo dated December 13, 2013, co-authored by Mayor Reed, myself, and councilmembers Herrera and Liccardo.
All right. No motion on the floor. Councilmember Liccardo.
Thanks, Mayor. I am supporting this because I, I think I share what's views that have been already offered, that we clearly need to take advantage of the window of opportunity we have now because we won't get to Phase 2 otherwise. But I really do have significant concerns about what we're doing in terms of long-term transportation infrastructure in that area. And this may be a conversation to be had in closed session, but I thought I'd at least ask the question now, is this time for us to be going back to Santa Clara at least and talking about what exactly is mandated by the EIR? And I know this would be a conversation I guess we'd have to have with Milpitas as well, particularly given the extraordinary amount of development that is planned on our doorstep in Santa Clara. Is this an opportunity for us to take a look and see whether or not we really need to be carrying the burden that we think we need to carry in the near future?
I think, let me just suggest that maybe it is a closed session discussion. My recollection of the negotiations with the county and Milpitas specifically were improvements on Montague, City of Santa Clara, there were some others. But I think, you know, working with staff, it may be good if we caucus and then maybe have a, come back in January with a further conversation with the council.
Okay. And just to be clear about what we perceive to be a significant delta between whatever fees might have been paid to support transportation infrastructure, that's of course assuming that everything went forward as planned, and what we're actually getting, and I know that number is pretty substantial. Is there, can you provide any estimate of how much of that $40 million is really dictated by an EIR and requirements that are inherent in the EIR as opposed to what would be dictated as a result of a settlement, the settlement that we had with the surrounding agencies?
Yeah, I think they are part of the EIR mitigation. And we worked off the staff memo and putting together those numbers are identified under cost summary implications.
Right.
I think that comes from the EIR document itself.
So we can say 100% of that is from the EIR? None of it is mandated independently from those, whatever settlement we had?
I don't know the answer to that, and I'll wait with Hans to...
Well, just, just to give you some rough numbers, the EIR has a transportation improvement plan that was 520 million spread over the four phases. With the lawsuits from the three agencies mentioned, it increased the requirement that we have by 50 million. So it went from 520 to 570. So the vast majority of the investment is really based on the EIR requirements.
Okay, that's really helpful. Thanks, Hans. So as we look at this chart about Phase 1 Transportation Plan, I think it's, you know, I have a somewhat sober, more sober view about whether this money can materialize, given that the regional funds that are overwhelmingly available to us, at least the discretionary funds at the county level are really coming through a One Bay Area Grant Program that is overwhelmingly focused on projects that are very transit-focused and multimodal-focused. And our needs right now are around things like a Montague widening and a Fourth Street overpass over 101 and really car-focused improvements. And so, I'm not optimistic that we're going to get the dollars from regional sources of funds. As we look at development fees shrinking from 80% to 40% of the pot, I mean, the reality is the fee cut that we're contemplating today is significantly more than simply a 50% haircut from the original. We're going from $13 to $2. And so, I think there's a considerable gap. And I, I know this is nothing that, that startles anyone here. I know the staff has been thinking hard about this for some time, but when we do come back, it seems to me it may be a time for us to talk about what Phase 1B looks like in North San Jose Plan. That is, you know, we've just had a conversation about the Hitachi campus and a considerable amount of funding that was paid for, what, $6 million in transportation improvements there plus another $10 million off-site. And is it time for us to talk about development agreements that might yield us highly desirable housing projects in North San Jose that would still satisfy, obviously, we know we need to take another look at the EIR. But if we're imposing high FAR requirements on ground floor retail and so forth with very high transportation fees as essentially part of a development agreement, I know there are 218 issues here, but if they're individual agreements that enable developers to take advantage of a very scarce pool of housing units, it seems to me it may be well worth our while to at least explore that as an opportunity to address this $40 million hole that we anticipate. So I just raised that for, as a, something to think about. I know we're thinking about a lot of options and I would just ask that we consider that option, recognizing we'll need to think about plenty of options before we solve this.
Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. So the chart that's up right now, the approved figures from 2006 and the, and the proposed figures for 2013, what happens as Councilmember Liccardo was concerned about, what happens if the regional funds don't come? What portion of the 2013 projections goes up? Is that the local funds portion that we would be on the hook for? Because we, we have to provide that, the infrastructure.
Yeah. Councilmember, so just to kind of refresh the council's recollection, the plan, so the, there's four phases for the North San Jose Plan and they each, every phase has a, a trigger or a cap based on the total number of jobs, housing, and transportation improvements. And so, I think the risk that we face is that the transportation improvements will lag the residential and the jobs. Right now, we're pretty close to the cap on, on the residential side. So we're trying to incent jobs to facilitate the job development. But if the, we will reach a cap in terms of the jobs and if we're under this proposed scenario, if we're not able to bring in regional dollars for literally regional improvements in North San Jose, then essentially we won't be able to move into Phase 2 of the development plan. The caveat would be is that there would be an option for council to look at if there's some, a contingency or earmark of local funds that we could use to offset any regional monies we don't get. That might be the opportunity. And that's, that's one of the ideas we want to take forward back to council. If there's a contingency and we recognize, you know, it's a bit of a stretch in the current environment to bring in these amount of regional funds, that we may have some options. So I think, you know, what we heard from Councilmember Liccardo is maybe also a Plan C approach, you know, where, you know, we, we create sort of a scenario where we'd allow more housing under First Phase if they're willing to pay additional fees.
But we're, so, I mean, I seem to understand that the only place that we can get where that local funds category increases would be the general fund. Is that, is that where it would come from?
Yeah. Let me just clarify, one of the options we're looking at is almost like internal tax increment financing, and you had directed us to look at this, whereby we would look at the net new revenue that comes from these developments, like sales tax revenue and utility tax revenue and transfer tax revenue, and potentially earmark that as an earmarked reserve so that if we, if council wanted to draw on that money, since it came from North San Jose to reinvest in North San Jose, that you would have that as an option. So that's one of the many options we'll be looking at.
But wouldn't we want to use those, those tax increments or internal tax increments on what, right now, we're struggling to want to use them for if we had them? Open libraries, open community centers, fix the streets that are falling apart right now? You know, I mean, this is, this is a real concern that these regional funds don't come, you know? And I think wishing or looking for this window of opportunity, I'm glad that, that we're conscious that this window of opportunity might close soon or later. Hopefully, it's later. But, you know, I mean, like everything else, everything goes in waves. It's risky. And, and I find, I actually find it, I find it sobering and actually frustrating that we're sitting here trying to predict the future on infrastructure development that actually we've already got something built in to, to, to build the infrastructure already, putting it on to the, the makers of the impacts. And yet, we have not even wanted to predict what the, what the future economy might do. Right now, it's doing well. And then open up community centers longer hours, open up libraries longer hours. We would be doing the same thing. We would be saying, you know what, let's take advantage of this. We would be saying, you know what, let's take advantage of this window of opportunity that, you know, the economy's good and we could add more services, but we're not doing that yet. You know, we're, we have this proposal in front of us that is letting, letting the makers of the impacts off the hook for impacts they're going to create. And we're not even guaranteed that, you know, anyone's going to come in. You know, I mean, that's the struggle that I'm having. And I'm not asking you to fix it right now, but, I mean, it's, it sounds, it sounds great, you know, and it actually is a little bit pie in the sky, but, you know, I mean, ultimately, the general fund's on the hook if regional funds don't come through. Is that, I mean...
Councilmember, that is true, but the recognition, just to add to that point, is with the new projects that the incentives bring in, then you get substantial dollars, and the reserve that Hans was referring to, in effect, pays one time, when then ongoing revenues from the projects will for many, many years be available to do exactly what you want to do, pay for services that go broadly across the city.
That's if regional funds come in.
Even if regional funds don't come in and we use our own earmarked reserve to pay off the one-time dollar of the gap, then the projects, either Samsung or hopefully Perry Ariaga, will create substantial revenues on an ongoing basis. So we know that we have work to do to come back to prove to you that there's, while there's risk, that it makes sense. And of course, look at potential other scenarios as Councilmember Licardo mentioned. So we know that's why we need to do good work to bring back to you in the March timeframe.
Well, I mean, that, well, thank you. I mean, I, we need to have that, but again, you know, I'm just, I'm sitting here looking how easy it, how easy it was for this council to make the sacrifices to, you know, our existing community, you know, folks that are living here, having libraries not open seven days a week, having community centers, you know, closing earlier than they should, violence is up, you know, we don't have the public safety numbers that we should have in terms of personnel, and yet, you know, where we pay for those services, the general fund, I'm not comfortable that the general fund is going to be protected from having to pay for these infrastructure improvements that will have to get done if North San Jose, when North San Jose has these impacts from development. That's all I'm saying. I'm just, I'm not convinced that we've done that. And I hope that you come back in March and you really come with a clear picture that shows this is where we're going to pay for it, even proposing something in policy that this council can approve that would actually protect having to raid the general fund to pay for these, these infrastructure impacts. You know, because, one, we still, again, we have roads that, in our neighborhoods, that are falling apart, and there is no, there's no chance of a lot of these roads getting fixed within the next four or five years. And so, you know, being far away from, you know, most of the city being far away from North San Jose and this area of, I mean, and I get that it's an economic engine over here, but there's a lot of folks that have lived here all their lives that are living with dilapidated roads, dilapidated infrastructure, resources that have just gone away, that, you know, it's not fair. So, you know, I hope that in March, that we have a more clear plan.
Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I agree, every word has been said on this issue from the staff and from my council colleague, and I have a long list of thanks, you know, to all the way to the CEO from Coriett, to many of the investors locally, but I'm going to just bypass all that. My concern remains the same, you know, the impact of current and future of North San Jose infrastructures and the roadway, the improvement project would really become a burden not just to the residents, those people that live in San Jose, but also those people that will be working in San Jose. And lack of the resources or funding for those traffic improvement, I cannot agree more with Councilmember Campos, you know, is, I really don't want to see that being pulled from, from general, from the general fund, because at any given Tuesday, we'll be competing with, you know, Councilmember Campos mentioned about library, police protection, park maintenance, and I may add, a salary increase for our hard-working city council employees. So I really don't want to, to see that we're, you know, making the promise now that we'll be able to, later on, when we have a better picture in March, to know how much improvement that actually needed in that area. We will come up with a plan to maybe draw some money either from the general fund or Kim mentioned about another, like, what do you call it, business?
Business cooperation revenues.
Business cooperation revenue. So it is really a big concern of mine. When we approved the Samsung Semiconductor Plan on February 12th, that was to reduce the traffic impact fee to $5, right? Those three projects that really took advantage of it, and, but at that time, we set a ceiling of 1 million square feet, that was, there was a ceiling that we set for the first 1 million square feet, or 1.2 million square feet. That program itself pretty much yield more than $10 million of potentially the regional fund from this transportation improvement. That's 10 million, 10, more than $10 million. And this proposal in front of us is actually more than $42 million if you calculate it. We're lowering the traffic impact fee from $12.44 or $13 to, no, from $15, actually, $14.44 to $2. So we're lowering $12.44 per square feet, and we're talking about 4 million square feet. That adds up to almost $50 million. So I just wanted to caution my colleague here, we're talking about a general fund, potentially general fund impact of $50 million plus the $10 million that we already committed in February, so a total of more than $60 million. Not a, not a small chunk. And also, I just wanted to remind my colleague here that the risk of what we're taking is all on the shoulder of the District Four residents, you know. I don't think this is something that I can support, so I will not be supporting the motion, although I'm very supportive of the economic development, but we're just kind of randomly taking a $14.44 traffic impact fee number, which I felt that the staff had put in a lot of effort to kind of calculate it, to do a lot of number crunching, to come out with that number with inflation factor. Now we're just randomly to say, okay, we're going to drop to, you know, $2 or maybe $1.99, and it's just hard for me to accept it. Another thing I don't like about this incentive program is we're just pretty much giving the incentive to the large company. People that can build more than 1 million square feet of industrial space will be able to qualify for this incentive program. If I want to give out the incentive program, I will favor the smaller company, the medium, mid-sized company, not just one or two large-sized company. To have, to have the threshold of you have to build more than a million-dollar square feet to take advantage of the city incentive, I don't think that as a public agency is the best way to even provide the incentive. Another thing I look at it is the first, the first horse out of the gate, we say, well, we lowered the incentive, the traffic impact fee to $5, you know, from $14.44. Now, we're going to lower it further down to $2. You know, the incentive program that I am familiar with, usually they give you the best incentive out of the gate, they say, hey, take this opportunity, this is the best incentive you have ever seen for a long time, and the next incentive will probably be less favorable than the first incentive, right? I mean, if you have really considered looking at some incentive program, that's what they usually do, they give you the best incentive, they say, you better take it now, otherwise if you wait six months from now, we may still have incentive, but not, but will not be as sweet as this one. But we're sweet in it, we're sweet in it. So the people that are listening, that have the money to invest to 1 million square feet of industrial buildings, hey, maybe you wait another few months, we'll even lower the traffic impact fee to zero or, you know, even lower. So I don't think that's really a way to really, to incentivize the industry. But, yeah, I have plenty more to say, and again, plenty more people to thank, but I would cut it off right here. I will not be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you. So the kind of projects that we're looking at in terms of incenting this are the current one that we have heard about, Perry Ariaga. What would happen if we don't move forward with this? Will we lose projects?
The Perry Ariaga project will die. So that's 2 million square feet, and not only do you lose the jobs that might go into that, you also lose the multiple of jobs, because these are driving industry companies, and they throw off jobs in other sectors as well. So if you want the jobs, you need the development.
And I think it's like five jobs, five additional jobs for every tech-driving industry job. So this creates jobs in industries that would be support industries to whatever that particular company, we don't know what it is, but we know it's a significant company that would be coming into that project. So there'd be all kinds of other companies, related companies, and then finally after those companies, then you get localized economic gains like restaurants and stores and other things that would support that. So it's a whole chain of things that happens when you get a big company, and that's, and that's why we're looking at this. I appreciate the attorney's memo to talk about making us aware of the size of the risk, and I think that's, we do need to think about how are we going to do the kinds of transportation improvements, but I think that getting the jobs is essential. We have a window of opportunity to get these jobs. We're seeing development in San Francisco and the Peninsula, and we're seeing it moving down here. We don't know how long that's going to take. Anybody who's lived in San Jose for a period of time in Silicon Valley knows the cycles. And right now, we're on a cycle that where we need to take advantage of it and get these companies in here, to get jobs for people, to bring in revenue. We don't have enough jobs in San Jose, we've chronicled that over and over again, .85 jobs per employed resident. That is one of the things we need to change, we need to move the needle on that. The way we're going to move the needle on that is to get some bigger employers to bring lots of jobs. Yes, we need mid-sized companies too, we need small companies too, but we also need these big employers, and they have the ability to build out significant infrastructure and to bring a lot of other jobs along them. It's not zero risk, there is no, there's no such thing in life as zero risk, but we need to take this, because we need to move forward and make sure that these things happen. I agree with Councilmember Licardo's conceptually about needing to think about the adjoining cities that are involved in this and having some of those conversations, some of that may have to be in closed session, and obviously, some of that will get to more of a regional basis in terms of ETA and looking at how we fund additional transportation. I think we should welcome those conversations, we're bringing some great value in what we're doing, Santa Clara has some value in some things they're doing. So I look forward to helping out and working on resolving some of those things, but we need to move forward with this. We need the jobs, we need the company.
Councilmember Camus.
Well, I want to thank staff for putting this together and for trying to pursue more jobs in our community. I think it is important, as Councilmember Herrera says, to strike while the iron's hot. I mean, the economy goes in cycles, I've been in, I've been a financial advisor for 18 years, and I could definitely tell you that it goes in cycles. And we do have to make, we do, we do have to strike, and we have to give incentives so that, so that businesses know that we're serious about job creation in our area. I also want to, you know, note that office buildings are a net positive to the economy as opposed to homes, which are a net negative to our general budget. And also, I think my colleague mentioned that, you know, we gave Samsung only $5, but we also gave them a lot of other incentives, discounts on their other taxes that they're paying on electricity and what have you, and, you know, you guys can remind me about which other incentives that we gave them. Are we giving any of those types of incentives as well?
No, we're not offering any other incentives.
No other incentives, okay. My second question is to Hans, and I trust you, Hans, and I know that you want to look out for your department. Do you think that the regional funds are a reality? Do you think that that might happen? I mean, it is a big risk, and I just want to make sure that, how confident you are of that process?
Well, let me just kind of give you sort of what I know in terms of what we're seeing in terms of the opportunities there. And so we would, would say that there is some risk. We can't point to a pot of money right now and say the regional dollars are going to come from that fund. But a couple of things are happening. When we first approved the North San Jose Plan, we knew at that time the city had a lot of other regional transportation priorities, the 101 Tully interchange, 101 Capital Urbana interchange, the 880-280 Stevens Creek interchange, those have been kind of longstanding priorities of the city, and we knew it would be hard to also get a lot of money for North San Jose in that timeframe. But we've been successful since 2006 to get all three of those projects fully funded. So I see that the projects in North San Jose, upgrading freeway interchanges on 237, 880, and 101, building new over crossings into the area, really rise to be the top priority regional projects within all of Santa Clara Valley. And so the plan that we have for North San Jose with the intensification, the transit orientation it has, I think really rise to the top of the important things. So, but, you know, the funding pots are dry at the federal, state, and the regional level for roadway projects, which is mostly, you know, our big needs in North San Jose. But at all those levels, there are discussions about how woefully underfunded transportation infrastructure is, whether it's for just basic pavement maintenance, which we have a lot of needs, as well as other highway investments, like the VTA express lanes and other improvements that are in the North San Jose Plan. So, you know, the timeframe that we have to work through this, it's going to take quite a while to absorb, you know, all the jobs that, job capacity we have in Phase One. So this is probably a five, maybe 10-year horizon that we're looking at, that we would need to identify the funding for these. So that's, those are kind of the factors that give me some level of confidence that this is a viable plan and that they're top priorities, and there's a lot of talk about making these investments, and so we'll, you know, see where it goes. We're already having positive discussions with VTA, they recognize that these are important projects and are looking at ways to try to get them funded. So we'll be, come back in the March timeframe with sort of more perspectives on this particular issue, and we do, I'd have to say, you know, there is some risk, but I think the risk is, you know, you stop development in North San Jose if, you know, we don't want to find some other local alternatives to fund it.
Thank you, and I definitely don't want to stop jobs from coming to San Jose. I also... I also had a, kind of a, like a technical item here. So we have this ta, this incentive from, for five dollars per, for five dollars per square foot on any buildings that are up to 1.25. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Developments over 100,000 square feet, up to a total number of projects of 1.25 million square feet. That, that program is fully subscribed at this point.
I see. The, it's up to 1.25 total square feet combined projects. I see. And this one project that we're talking about is two million square feet?
That's correct.
I see. Okay. That, that, that clarifies things a lot for me. And then, just, just for the record here, I see that this, this offer does expire on December 31st, 2014, so it's not like we're going to be forgiving every, every company that comes the, the fees.
That's right. It's time limited, and again, the goal is to accelerate a, a big project or two in the very near term.
Okay. Wonderful. Last, you know, lastly, I just, you know, I think it has been spoken that, you know, jobs create other jobs, and I think that, that it's, it's, it's important to understand that, that that's one of the things that San Jose suffers. We need to be known as, as, as the, the capital of jobs, not just Silicon Valley. And, you know, once people go to their jo, live near their jobs, I mean, everybody that lives in San Jose has a job somewhere else, and if they start living near their jobs, then perhaps we'll have less traffic congestion, and I'm, that's my hope. I mean, I'm hoping by, by creating jobs that less people will actually use our highways and, you know, can use light rail. In fact, light rail was, light rail was even going to double-track most of First Street, from what I recall from the meetings that I've attended. So, again, I'll be in support of this, and thank you again for all your work, and, and thank you for going out there and trying to get jobs into the city of San Jose. It's, it's one of the most important things that I think can be done to help our economy. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate some of the comments from my colleagues across the board. I think Councilmember Chu said it quite well. Generally supportive of everything everybody said up here, and I appreciate some of the issues he raised and also Councilmember Campos raised. I've been extremely supportive of pretty much every incentive and development that's come before me, and again, I'm generalizing, and then I'm looking at this one thinking, okay, Perry Ariaga, probably one of the wealthiest developers in this county and maybe even the country, and we're providing a significant incentive and, and really forfeiting some potential dollars for public infrastructure. I don't think that point has really been disputed. So I have an item here in front of me, and to the mayor's point about whether or not this development would go forward, I, I see a reference here in terms of waiving one of the components here, or at least allowing some flexibility and then some other items in the design guidelines, but I have yet to hear from this developer that some of these issues are necessary for this development. I have yet to hear from this developer that they can't abide by some of these design guidelines for whatever reason. I have yet to hear from this developer that we need to give them, what's the term here? Reasonable good faith effort on the business cooperation program. And I, not that I don't believe the mayor and his, maybe I'm assuming you've had meetings and this has been conveyed to you, or staff has, but, I mean, this is a compelling issue, and, and the case to me has not been made, at least personally, and in the memo when we talked about the design guidelines, there's a line here from staff. It says, "Staff has worked to analyze the urban design guidelines in order to make the edits requested by council and ensure the document remains consistent with the policy. However, at this time, the document is not ready for review by the council. So in order to facilitate this project, we're not gonna apply these." So, again, that's the case, that's, that's, that's the extent of the case being made to me, why I'm being asked to make these decisions, and I'm not compelled, I really feel that I understand from the development side why we need to do this action. I can appreciate the waiving the fees or reducing the fees I support on Samsung, and I'm supportive of it tonight, but at some point, I really would appreciate maybe some time either from staff or from this developer, if this is an important development to him, as you're telling me it is, to get a call. I've gotten calls from other developers. They've come into my office, explained to me why they're making a proposal, why they're asking for some modifications, why they're asking for incentive, and it's been silence in my office on this issue. Let me ask the city attorney a, a question on bifurcating a motion. And can I ask, as a friendly amendment, the individual who made the motion to bifurcate it, or do I need to make a substitute motion to bifurcate it?
I, I think you're gonna work through the chair to see if he would wanna entertain a bifurcation of the, of the matter and take them to separate or divide them up. Otherwise, it would be a substitute motion.
Okay. There's really just two items, and I'm supportive of, as I mentioned, most of the recommendations. What I'd like to ask the maker of the motion is to bifurcate item E in the staff recommendation, and then the recommendation from the mayor, vice mayor, and Councilmember Herrera and Licardo, to allow me to vote individually on the design guidelines and the change in the language to the good faith effort.
So if I understand it, let me, bouncing between this staff memorandum and the others. So we have A, B, C, D, and E. I'm looking at the staff memorandum, correct?
Yes.
And the motion contemplates moving the staff recommendation with a change in the language for C. So what you'd like to pull out for a separate vote would be C and E?
Yes, please.
So we would have a vote, so presumably, the first motion would be on A, moving A, B, and D, get that out of the way, and then a, a motion on the remaining two items.
Yes.
Bifurcate it. I think that's fine. I think it's not too, not too confusing?
Yeah.
I think we can do that.
Hope not.
That's okay with the second. Okay.
Okay.
We can do that when we get, we get to it, we can bifurcate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let me just answer a couple of questions that have been raised here, and go back to the beginning, well, maybe not to the beginning, back to the beginning of a discussion with Perry Ariaga, which is now multiple years old. Because a few years ago, when nothing was happening in North San Jose, before the economy picked up, and we were trying to figure out what we could do to get people to invest, I had a series of meetings. First, a set of meetings with basically housing developers and property owners to ask them, what could we do to get them to write the hundred-million-dollar checks it takes to start a housing development? And we successfully identified some things that we could do, and the staff brought those to the council with, they weren't really development agreements, they were other kinds of agreements that helped them plan for their multiple phases with some certainty, and they needed to have that done by a certain period of time. And there was a lot of staff work that went into it, but we did that, and then we ended up with several thousands units of housing that got started. And I had a similar conversation with the industrial office R and D-type developers, and they were harder sell, because this was still during the, the recession and the housing people were on the edge, but the, the other developers were, were a much harder sell. And I talked specifically to Perry Ariaga about their property, because it's pretty hard to ignore their property, sitting right there at, at First Street 101 and Broca there. It's a pretty obvious piece of property, 20 acres or so. And I had multiple conversations with them, and it was always, what can we do to get you to move ahead with a project on that property? And at first, there was nothing, and that was the first conversation, because nothing was moving. The second conversation was, well, your fees are too high, and, and we would need some other things, like abandoning the street that's there. And I said, well, the fees are 13 a foot for transportation, and there's some other fees. And we came back and built that first incentive for projects over 100,000 feet to have the incentive be, the reduction of the fee of five dollars a foot instead of 13. And there are companies that took advantage of that, and that's been fully subscribed. I, I went to, back to Perry Ariaga, and I said, well, is that gonna move you off of your dime on your property, your 20 acres of prime property? And they said, no. And I said, well, what will it take to get you to invest in your property? And they said, the fees are still too high. So I, I came back, and we brought a proposal to council to reduce the fees to two dollars. And they are now moving ahead with their project. They've filed, they're in the processing, I'm not sure exactly where they are, but they're well on their way, having spent millions of dollars of their own money towards getting a project moving. So to them, it was important, and yes, they're wealthy developers, but they also have property all over Silicon Valley. And therein lies our problem, that people with money have a choices of where they can spend it, and the closer you are to the mother lode at Stanford, the easier it is to get projects. And that's why we've seen projects throughout the rest of Silicon Valley get started ahead of us, and we're a little bit further from Stanford, and so it's taken a little bit more. But they're certainly moving ahead with their project. It, it's a real project. They have not yet disclosed who company X is. I assume company X wants to, they'll tell us. But they're moving ahead, and in, in part because of this incentive, and in part because of our ability to work at the speed of business. And those are two big factors to them and to their company X client that's actually going to occupy the building. So this conversation goes back years, and we have the opportunity, I think, to close the deal on this and get them to actually pull the building permits and put in two million square feet of space that's worth at least 700 million dollars, if not many more, with thousands of jobs. So how long will the opportunity last? I, I don't know. I think it depends on the economy, and I can't predict that. So we have, you know, staff has been engaged with them, trying to figure out, sort it out. We've spent a lot of effort to get them moving, because it's a prime piece of property, and there are a few unknowns and moving parts, but it all seems to be moving in the right direction. And the alternative is to do nothing with incentives, and I know some of my council colleagues don't wanna do these incentives. And the alternative is to wait, and wait until we're in the path of progress and all the rest of the land is developed around us in Santa Clara, Sunnyvale, Milpitas, because it is seeing development. And eventually, maybe we'll get to San Jose. That's one alternative. The other alternative is to give up on our jobs growth objectives. If we look at our economic development strategy, it's about jobs. Give up on trying to get to a jobs-housing balance and just build housing. We're not having to do incentives to the housing developers. What they wanted was for us to get out of the way, which we did. And we could have a lot more units in San Jose if we wanted to say, well, we're not gonna worry about jobs anymore. So there's not a big range of alternatives, and I think this is the best choice to get the jobs. And so that's why I supported this and why I've worked on this, trying to get this particular project moving. It's a really big project, the largest single office project that we've ever seen in San Jose. Councilmember Campos, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm glad that, that Councilmember Rocha made the request to bifurcate, because I, I still think that, I mean, I, I get the economics of it, I get your explanation, and yes, we do need to balance or come, come to balance with the, you know, jobs-housing imbalance. I mean, I think, I mean, I'm, I'm not optimistic about that, especially since we've, we've gone down and we're going to add 30,000 units over the next 20 to 30 years, you know, but we'll, we'll see. We still have to do it. We still have to make the effort, and we still have to be lucrative. I think the bottom line is that, you know, we are offering, I mean, we're, we're offering a really, really good deal here, even, even if it's a short window. And item D in the staff recommendation, I don't think, is that, is that, no, 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 item C in the staff recommendation, I don't think that's too much to ask or even make as a requirement, and I think, Rick, you can, you can answer this, that legally we could do that, or else staff wouldn't have made it a, a recommendation. But that's not too much to ask to say, okay, we're giving up a lot here, but you have to not just make a good faith effort, because that's basically, a good faith effort could be picking up the phone, making a phone call, hey, can you supply us, or, you know, what are your prices? And you don't like that, and, okay, I made a good faith effort, and you go and order in Utah or out of the country, you know, for whatever, for whatever you need to do. And that doesn't do anything for us here, for people that are, that have jobs here and, you know, and so forth. So, you know, I, I, I hope that when the request to bifurcate comes at my council colleagues will support that, and, you know, then we act on this. Thanks.
Councilmember Herrera.
Do we have any idea when the building permit might get pulled for the Perry Ariaga?
We're looking at the planning permit, tentative hearing date of January 8th of 2014, so just in a few short weeks, and then as soon as the building permit is submitted for its plan check, we'll get started on that right away. So we should be issuing building permits in 2014.
And will we, do you think we will know the name of the user? Will it be public at that point or not?
I can't speak for that. I can't speak for the tenant.
This is, I just have to say, this is, this is really exciting. This is very exciting. So look forward to that date to, to begin that, that project begins work.
All right. We have had a motion to bifurcate, which we will do. That means the motion to approve would be taken in two pieces. First is a motion to improve, approve staff recommendation A, B, and D. Correct? That's, okay. So, Councilmember Rocha, do you wanna speak to that motion?
No, I just had one question for, and I'm, I'm gonna, I guess, direct question to you, Mr. Mayor. The reason for the memo that you signed on with a number of your colleagues and asking for this change to good faith as opposed to requiring it, it doesn't really speak to it, and this is just a one-page memo unless I'm missing it, as to why you made that recommendation. And again, to my point earlier, when some of these items in front of me, it's helpful to hear from the applicant or the individual, the developer, to understand why we're making these requests as opposed to just an offer that you may think is valuable. I don't know if this was critical to the development at all. It doesn't say that in the memo, and you spoke a little bit to it, but if you wouldn't mind elaborating a little bit more, because you'd spoken in general about the need for us to make these efforts, and I think, as I mentioned, my commitment to economic development and financial incentives is pretty clear when you look at items, which I mentioned I'm supportive of, A and B, those are significant actions to get us to where you're talking about. But I don't fully understand the need for this change to the good faith, if you don't mind.
Well, first, this particular item is, has not been a factor in this development because it's not been a requirement. It would be adding a requirement, so I don't know exactly what impact it might have, although my staff has talked to Perry Ariaga and specifically about this. And it can be complicated because the, the rebate and the fees and, and our approach goes to not one place, but to multiple places, and so they have multiple contracts, multiple subs, and it can be complicated. It's not that they're opposed to doing it, I think it's an okay idea, it's just that in fact, that if it's a requirement as opposed to a good faith effort, we could be in a position where we put them in a position they can't comply because of, you know, relationships with, you know, subs and things like that. So it's a little bit about the unknown and never having done this before on a big project of this size. We know how to do it, and we've done it with, with individual companies, but this is a lot of, a lot of players on, on a contract of this size. So they just can't commit upfront to being able to do it. And this is a language we took from the space, Facebook deal in Menlo Park.
Okay. And, and I expected that was probably it, but again, there was nothing that really explained that. And not that the developer or property owner needs to meet with me individually, but there's a council meeting where a significant item that's gonna be in their best interest is here, and they're not even here to testify to the case that you're making, and you're left to make their case, and a very compelling one, as is always. But I hope you can appreciate mine when making these decisions, that it'd be helpful to hear from the applicant at some point. So thank you.
One of the things, staff, we've talked a lot about the Perry Ariaga project. Obviously, it's a big project moving. How about the Super Micro project? Can you just bring that up to speed?
Mr. Mayor, Super Micro is moving forward on their development plans, and we should be planning and building, we'll be meeting with them soon.
Also, another very large project, not quite as big as this. Okay, we have a motion, and that is to approve staff recommendations A, B, and D, as in Delta. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed? I have one opposed. Councilmember Chu, correct?
Public comment, is there any?
I do have some cards, never mind. Come back.
I'm assuming Mr. Wall, of course, said something.
Of course, I'm sorry, Mr. Wall. Ben Grant from SPUR. Which I think you wanna speak on the other, other motion, but we'll take it any time here. Which I think you want to speak on the other motion, but we'll take it anytime here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. A pleasure to be here. My name is Benjamin Grant. I work with SPUR, which is a nonprofit think tank and advocacy organization. SPUR supports good government and good planning through education, outreach, and advocacy. And as many of you are probably aware, SPUR has had a presence in San Jose for the past two years. We're keenly interested in what's happening in this city, and particularly in a lot of the matters that we've been, that you all have been discussing this afternoon. I want to talk about, really, item E and the other aspects of the conversation today that turn on urban design. SPUR is very enthusiastic about the vision in the 2040 general plan that really puts great places at the, as one of the cornerstones of the economic development strategy on par with employment as a priority, so much so that our first policy project out of our San Jose office is this report, which came out this week. You'll all be receiving it in the mail, getting to great places, how better urban design can strengthen San Jose's future. The premise of this report is that SPUR is very enthusiastic about the 2040 general plan vision in general, and the idea of concentrating development in designated growth areas along transit corridors, and creating a series of great livable and walkable places. But it's very important to understand that density and the land use mix is not in itself enough to deliver the benefits that we associate with smart growth. You don't simply get the benefits when development is denser or when it's mixed. It also has to be well-designed, well-integrated, to create the kinds of benefits like public health, like civic and public life benefits, like transportation and access and walkability, and yes, economic development, because as has been referenced many times today, increasingly, especially in the tech field, there's a great interest in economic, the economic value of urban amenities. Not all urban design changes are costly, and I think it's also very important to note that there's a tension between flexibility, which we've talked a great deal about and which item E really references, and certainty. And in fact, one of the challenges with the North San Jose Design Guidelines is the confusion as to their status from a regulatory point of view. And introducing additional flexibility can undercut that.
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. SPUR staff is available at your convenience, especially in considering revisions to the North San Jose plans. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Wall?
His time was up 30 seconds ago. With reference to this project, you're incurring a lot of debt here, and I'm surprised that you don't have the Director of Finance down here to enter into the discussion, because look at this chart. With the feds talking about increasing interest rates around April this year, the regional funding could drop from 0 to 5%, which would shift the other to local funds. The amount of funds coming in from these projects, Samsung and what have you, are illusory to this date. They are just projections. And if they fall short, the debt service increases because of these traffic mitigation requirements. You're basically sitting on the precipice of making 237, Sankar Road, First Street, Lafayette and Santa Clara, a virtual parking lot. And we also integrate now the plant master plan, an egregious waste of taxpayer money, as I might add, with the approximation of 15,000 jobs on water pollution control plant land. So when you're giving these breaks like this, you better start thinking about the vast numbers of cars that are going to be coming in here. In addition, we really have to look at who's getting the benefit of this. Where is this money coming from? Because in all the different committee meetings that I have, our Honorable Director of Transportation says, hey, we're out of money. And you're getting ready to go for a ballot measure in 2016 to come up with road infrastructure requirements. Now, are you going to start lumping this project onto this 2016 ballot initiative? Because we've seen the horrors of the Stephen Creeks issue with the allowance of Santana Road to be built out, the expansion of Valley Fair without the necessary traffic improvements at the time, creating a virtual parking lot on the existing freeways and freeway off-ramps. You have significant problems, and I don't support this at all.
All right. Back to the motion, I'm going to call a motion again. So the motion was for A, B, and D, Delta. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed? Councilmember Chu, still opposed? Hadn't changed your mind? Mr. Wall didn't talk you out of it? Okay. The motion carries with one no vote. The second motion of the bifurcation would be for items C and E. And item C is to change the language of the staff recommendation, and the other one is to approve the staff recommendation. On that one, let me just speak to that for a minute. The reason we brought this to the council earlier, and the council actually approved the direction to come back with this, was that when you're dealing with a Fortune, World Fortune 100 company, and people that have built a lot of product in Silicon Valley, they tend to have a pretty good idea of what they want for their project. And while they can comply with most of our guidelines, and do, not all of them are something the way they want to build their project. And if you're going to say no to an Apple spaceship, or whatever they call that campus in Cupertino, you're not going to get the development. And if you're going to say no based on some urban design guidelines, some of those projects just aren't going to happen. And so the council direction was to just acknowledge the fact that when you're dealing with really big companies who know what they want to do for their employees and their project, that we have to give them a little flexibility, that urban design is not the most important thing in North San Jose. In fact, North San Jose is a jobs plan. And the whole reason we've done the North San Jose planning is to facilitate driving industries' growth and development of jobs in San Jose. We did not do the North San Jose plan to have better urban design or better-looking buildings. Now, we're getting some, and that's a good thing. And I don't have any problem with that, but we have to remember that it is a jobs plan. The whole objective is to support driving industries and try to get them into San Jose. And these big companies with big projects, they are going to need more flexibility. And we just have to, I think, acknowledge that, and that was the previous council direction. So we've got this back, and that's the reason that it's here. Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. Refresh my memory on urban design guidelines. Does that apply to the whole North San Jose area development, or just the core?
Thank you, councilmember. The North San Jose urban design guidelines apply to the entire area. There is some specific direction for the core, because it is going to be the most intensive area. But the idea was, how can we gently have the transformation occur in North San Jose in terms of block sizes, access to transit, et cetera?
Grid streets? Okay. All right. And if an application came forward that didn't meet those, council has the discretion to approve that without making this change today?
That's correct. Most of these projects, however, are approved by the planning director through a development permit, and the director of planning uses his discretion in terms of the application of the design guidelines. So the direction the council gave earlier in the year is really the basis for our analysis of the Perry-Ariaga project that's before us now.
So then, staff recommending this change, what is the purpose of that, to the point you just made?
It basically provides documentation. And again, I think staff tried to find a balance point to meet the council direction without completely undoing the design guidelines. So this brief paragraph that's in the staff memo is an attempt to identify how we would handle the flexibility. There may be additional design guideline changes that we'll be bringing to you in March, but we just wanted to acknowledge how we were handling this major potential tenant and have it documented, so that way, if there are other big companies looking at San Jose, they would have the assurance that they might be granted that same flexibility.
So you could have recommended this to apply within this 4 million square feet that's listed in the staff memo, though, right?
That's another option.
Thank you.
I think maybe the best way to explain this, from my point of view anyway, is if Cisco came to us today and said, we'd like to put up 20 buildings and fill them with 10,000 employees in North San Jose, we would say no under the design guidelines. They would not meet the design guidelines. They wouldn't fit this criteria. I think that would be a mistake. And so I'm willing to cut them a little slack if they show up with those kind of plans, so they have their ideas of what they prefer. And I don't want to preclude that. And the difficulty of not having it in the guidelines with this flexibility is a lot of those decisions get made long before they get to the council, that when a developer comes in and meets with the staff the very first time, and if staff is inflexible, the project never goes beyond that, because a lot of developers don't want the trouble of trying to overcome staff objections, even though someday it might come to the city council and the council might disagree. It's providing that flexibility so that the staff knows that, you know, they can do it, they don't have to take it all the way through the process and hope that the council will do it.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate that much, and having worked at the redevelopment agency when we worked with Theo Paoli to do these urban design guidelines. I think my interest is more of having a full discussion on the merits of them, and I don't disagree with anything you just said. And that's why I think I'd rather deal with them as a whole than on an individual basis, depending upon which application comes in front of us. So I know you talked about March, but the council has never adopted these formally as...
That's true. We understand council has accepted them.
Accepted. Okay. And the nuance for that, if you wouldn't mind explaining a little bit? Or should I ask Rick now?
Right.
Or should we hit Joe with that one? This is his last meeting. Why don't you tell us a little bit about that? I'm teasing. Go ahead, Laurel.
Well, I'll give a start, and certainly the rest of the team can jump in. But typically, we differentiate, because accepting is a slightly softer acknowledgement by the council that we do have guidelines. If they were adopted either as by resolution or by ordinance, then we're really bound to them, and so we wanted to have some flexibility in their application.
Which, okay, which then we do have the flexibility. So, Mayor, I really support what you're saying, and I think, you know, I mean, let's just say hypothetically, I'd rather us at some point vote on whether or not we should even have these in place. And I think that's the better action for us to go forward, and I know we can't do that today. But again, I'm still uncomfortable with the direction as it stands. Thank you.
I do want to go back even further in time to answer a couple of questions. One of the things that we did probably five years ago was to run a charrette around North San Jose guidelines and development guidelines, with developers, architects. We spent hours with staff and involved in it. And there was considerable concern at that time about the inflexibility of the guidelines on some areas. And so that's been an issue that I've been concerned about, just because I heard it from people who are in the business of it. And I know specifically, more recently, with the Perry-Ariaga project for one, it was a problem for their vision of what they wanted to do. And so that's why I recommend that we demonstrate some flexibility and give the staff some additional flexibility. Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. I see why you, I think it's pretty clear that you are an attorney, your case gets better and better and better as the day goes on, or I'm just getting more tired and tired and tired. Is it possible to continue, to take it a step further in the bifurcation and separate these two items, or is that opportunity past us?
I think we can do that if...
You can do it if the chair and the makers of the motion are...
My bet is the mayor would support that.
As long as we don't keep talking about it. Okay, I heard that. Okay. So let's bifurcate again, then, if that's all right with the... Trifurcate? Yes, this will be trifurcation. Okay, so the trifurcated, the second part of the trifurcated motion, just in order, would be C, which was a recommended change in the language from the staff recommendation. So on that one, trifurcated motion, part two. On that one, all in favor? Opposed? One opposed, two opposed, Chu and Rocha opposed. That motion carries. Now, on the, this is a trifecta now. The third part of the trifurcated motion, which would be recommendation E, which is now standing alone, on that one. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed on that one. So that is a trifecta. We get all three approved with different votes on each one. Okay. Are we done with that item? Not done with the agenda, but we are done with that item. And this is the last meeting of the year, so however long it takes, it's still the last. Kim Walsh?
Okay, Mayor, Council, this next item, we're responding to council direction to come back by December 31st and extend this suspension through March. It's already been reviewed by committee. I have a really interesting presentation, if you'd like me to give it. Otherwise, we're happy to take questions.
We have a motion to approve. Mr. Wall, you want to speak on this one?
Briefly, once again, we're going right to the heart of our Director of Transportation's capital improvement budget. This is where these construction fees and all end up. And so you're once again robbing Peter to pay Paul and deferring traffic improvement, or roadway improvements from the traffic improvement budget by allowing this gifting of public monies that, at the CED meeting, by the way, there was a panel of different businesses, and they gave testimony that, you know, the cost of doing business, it wasn't really the issue here in San Jose. They wanted to relocate here because they were close to venture capitalists, that they were close and involved with Silicon Valley. But no, this is, again, you're putting the onus of traffic repairs on property owners around 2016. This is what you're doing, along with what you just decided previously. All these costs are going to be lumped on this ballot initiative, because you have no money, you're incurring debt, you have a failing roadway infrastructure that's estimated at $1 billion, the figures from our Director of Transportation. You want to have $100 million a year for 10-year funding source to repair the infrastructure of our roads. And so, you know, you can talk jobs out of one corner of your mouth all you want, but the debt is real, and that's what's lagging you down. That's the lid and the britches of doing the speed at business, because of the debt you're incurring, and the illusory chase for revenues that may or may not appear. Because remember, the feds are getting ready to quit printing money, and a lot of, all these other funding sources are going to dry up, and it's only going to exacerbate the problem. Thank you.
Includes public testimony. We have a motion to approve. Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor. I see this proposal, although it hits to the infrastructure maintenance fund, the traffic and impact fee, or the like, but the amount is not that significant, like we're talking about $60 million. And also, with this modification, I think it clarified a lot of confusion regarding to the commercial office R&amp;D versus the industrial. So I'll be supporting this motion.
Motion is to approve. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Item 4.5 is a rezoning of property on the northeast corner of Lorraine Avenue and South Montgomery Street. Councilmember Liccardo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask for a deferral based on my memorandum of Friday's date.
Right. We have a motion to defer. I have no request to speak on the motion. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed. Matters deferred. Was there a specific date? I'm sorry. To be determined. Okay. Item 4.6 is next, rezoning of property on the west side of Lincoln Avenue, north of Ozeray. We have a motion to approve. No request from the public to speak on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed. That's approved. 4.7 is rezoning of property between Grand Avenue and Race Street, Park Avenue. We have a motion to approve. One request to speak. Mr. Wall?
This project gets to the issue once again, creating housing in commercial areas. I did not come up with the formulation of jobs-to-housing ratios that going to make urban villages work. But in my estimation, if you don't embrace a housing moratorium, you've already shifted the housing equation to such a degree that your jobs is not going to be there to support your urban villages. Now, earlier today, there was a discussion of the first urban village. That may or may not... That may or may not work. But for the city to keep building houses in commercial areas, this is just not going to pan out. And so I suggest that you really start thinking, since you don't have city services basically to take care of people. I mean, today, it's what, in nationwide press, that our city is no longer the safest city, but there's a good chance you'll get murdered in this city. I mean, we have the highest crime rate in the state of California now. And you want to entice more and more people throughout the last meeting of this year to rely on coming into San Jose to be prosperous and enjoy their life, and yet you can't basically walk across the street without the risk of being shot dead, or knifed, or mugged, or what have you. So I say no to this project as it is. Leave it commercial... Oh, in addition to that affordable housing requirement, once again, affordable housing has crept up and the taking involved. Now, earlier today, we talked about that Major League Baseball was interfering with the commercial interests of the downtown. But that is not so, because all that property that was bought for the ballpark, it easily was bought for housing. So you potentially have nothing but housing to go into the downtown to dissuade your argument that Major League Baseball is interfering with your economic interest or tortious interference with contract. And it also goes into the option agreement with Lou Wolf, the amount of money that he got gifted. Thank you.
That concludes public testimony. We have a motion to approve on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Next item is 4.8, actions related to real property on the east side of South Jackson Avenue, more commonly known as the Rocket Ship project. We have a motion to approve the conditional use permit. This is not a replay of last week's meeting. This is actually the item we didn't deal with last week. We do have some requests from the public to speak. Councilman Campos, you want to take the public testimony first, or you want to go ahead?
I do have a couple of questions for Eric, but we could do it after. Is that okay?
Sure, that's fine. Let's hear from the applicant first on the conditional use permit. Five minutes for the applicant before we take the public testimony.
Good evening, Mayor Reed, members of the city council. My name is Eric Shanour, and the Shanour Company represents Launchpad Development and Rocket Ship Education on this application. Okay? And this is a continuation of our dialogue from last week, so I'm just going to do a very quick recap so we can all go home. As we stated before, both the staff and the planning commission recommend approval of this conditional use permit in conjunction with the zoning that's already approved. We did community outreach. We went door-to-door, and we submitted to you a petition of 160 signatures from the immediate neighborhood that support the project. We also held a community meeting, and this is a land use item that has had two council hearings, one in the evening last week, one in the evening again this week, even though it was supposed to be the afternoon. The rezoning path and CUP path that we agreed to come on with staff was, the objective was to create better urban design along Jackson Avenue and adjacent to the future urban village. I've put up the diagram of what our project would look like along Jackson. So we're taking a dilapidated vacant building and creating a lively and attractive positive in the neighborhood. With regard to drop-off and pickup, the traffic analysis identified that the project needed 550 feet at most for queuing for drop-off and pickup, and the site design here provides 950 feet of drop-off and pickup. So the traffic report concluded that the drop-off and pickup should work for the school. The outdoor play space, the city has no standard, the state of California has no standard for charter public schools. So we designed to the standard of the state standard for outdoor play space for daycare facilities for elementary-age children. So this site plan exceeds that state standard. We received a memo that Councilman Campos issued to the council with regard to the potential of a traffic mitigation escrow account, and we think that he brings up a good point, that there could always be unanticipated impacts out there. And he makes a reasonable suggestion that the project make a contribution. So we are proposing to put $10,000 into a city account, a line item, to pay for future pedestrian or traffic safety improvements at the discretion of the city. And we did have discussion with city staff about that, and that's how we arrived at the amount. We were told that a flashing pedestrian beacon and crosswalk installation costs about that amount, so that, we don't know that that's what the project is going to be, but if that, if it comes to that, the money will be there to accomplish that. With regard to use of other city facilities or land, all we can say is that we have the need to open many more schools. We have a waiting list of over 2,500 kids citywide. So we would be very interested in working with the city in partnership on any city-owned facility or city-owned property that could be made available to us to operate a school. We would enter into those discussions immediately because we have more schools that need to open. So lastly, there are 400 children who have already expressed an interest and signed up to attend this school this coming school year. So we hope that you will support the staff recommendation and commission recommendation to allow us to take this blighted property and turn it into a vibrant positive in a neighborhood that can really use it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Campos, you want to ask a question?
Since you're up here already, Eric, thank you for taking and accepting that recommendation. And again, I think that this is probably, in the long run, better for the school, given that, you know, we've got a number of schools where, that are on major roadways. You know, and human nature is to do what the easiest thing to do. And I think the fact that if, in years to come, if that becomes a problem and you're having too many pedestrians crossing the street when they're not supposed to, given that it's part of the condition that that's not supposed to happen, you'd be in violation of your conditional use permit. And so coming back to make the request, which all schools have done that, you know, we just did that on two sides of James Lick High School, where we finally were able to do the lighted pedestrian crossings, you know, it's anticipated. So thank you for accepting that recommendation. The other one, and this is, and a lot of people don't recognize it, but on page 26, under the conditions of the CUP, Condition 28E, traffic circulation, the permittee shall install signage prohibiting left-hand turns during peak hours from the northern driveway on Jackson Avenue. And perhaps that could be just a prohibition on left-hand turns, period. And here's the reason why. 10 feet from that egress is the egress from the Bank of America property. And that one actually has a no left-hand turn. That's during all times. And a lot of folks get cited for making that turn. And I could see just from a city administrative and even at the appeals hearing board, where if that, if you've got two different messages on both egresses, you know, that will get appealed, and it just becomes something that we're going to have to deal with. So would you be willing to, and perhaps, Joe, you can tell us whether or not that's a good idea or not, but just having, just a prohibition of left-hand turns, plus it does make it a safer vehicle movement.
Are you asking me or Joe?
Maybe Joe can have the first stab at it before you retire.
Well, the prohibition is certainly a lot easier to go through if it's just a no-left turn. The reality is, it's something that the police department's not going to be an enforcement tool, so it's more of an advisory to the parents that are using that staff, you know, that that really is why we put those there. So kind of managing those expectations. I think, as you say, that there are some challenges that exist out there on Jackson, and so the more of that kind of traffic directory that we provide, I think is beneficial. But our transportation staff looked at it, and they were comfortable with it, the way it was written. They felt that it wasn't that big of an issue to totally prohibit it.
So would you be willing to just change the language to no left-hand turn? And actually, Joe, a lot of people get cited for making that turn. I mean, I know when the previous council member was in office, they'd get a lot of complaints, and I, you know, driving down that street, I'd, you know, I'd see people pulled over all the time there. But, you know, I think in the long run, it is actually a better, you know, if we can prohibit dangerous, you know, vehicle movements, then, you know, the better. So would you be willing to do that as well?
So yes, we can live with that restriction, yes.
Okay. And would the maker of the motion be willing to accept my memo in addition to this request?
That would be fine, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Yeah. So just, I just want to clarify. So the added items to the motion are a contribution of $10,000 to the city for a line item for future ped or traffic safety improvements at the discretion of the city. And then a full-time no-left-turn restriction on our driveway. Okay?
And to clarify, because I don't want to put the project in jeopardy on Condition 28C, we will tweak that a little bit because it talked about educating parents not to do mid-block. And we'll just clarify that unless there's a sidewalk. So if we, in fact, go through and put this crossing in, then that really shouldn't apply. So we'll tweak that.
Okay. That was the question, period. We still have public testimony.
Okay.
And you were done with your five minutes. All right, we'll take public testimony on this. Greg Lebman, Gloria Sermanio, and some of these folks may not have made it to the end of the day here. Emma Lu, Matt Hammer. Please come on down. Fatima Flores, Jose Arenas. Well, we got Matt Hammer.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I spoke on this last week, and just want to, again, thank you all for all of the work that you all have done to support SJSV 2020 over the years, and for all your support in trying to improve public education for children in San Jose. We're very excited about this project and hope that you all can approve it today. It's going to impact the lives of thousands and thousands of kids over the years, and hundreds of families are excited about this and hope that you can support it. Thanks so much.
Hello, my name is Emma Lu, and I'm here to support Rocket Ship Jackson. First, I would like to thank you all for approving the rezoning last week, and I'm coming back to ask for your support once again to approve this permit so that, because we are very excited about the future of this school, and we look forward to send our children to the school in the upcoming year. So please vote yes. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jose Arenas, and I'm a resident of District 6. And just speaking in support of approving the conditional use permit meets a need and contributes to the common good of our city. So that's it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fatima Flores, and I'm a parent of a four-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old. I personally had the opportunity to go to Santa Clara Unified School District. My siblings did not. I graduated from high school. I got an AA at Mission College. My siblings got a GED. One is trying to take the Chesapeake exam, and the other one still has hope for high school to graduate. It's a shame, because we all came from that same household, but I want an opportunity to give my children a better education. At the moment, I'm a stay-at-home mom, so the finances aren't there to buy a home out of San Jose. I'm not saying all schools are bad in San Jose, but I want the opportunity to make a choice. So I'm in support for Rocket Ship. I would like the opportunity, as a parent, to have that choice. So please vote yes. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony. I have one more question for, I don't know if it's for staff or for the applicant that has to do with Mexican Heritage Plaza. The applicant said they were willing to work with us on any property that we might have, but there was a specific question raised about Mexican Heritage Plaza. I know it's leased to somebody else. We approved that, but I am curious if staff is aware of any opportunity there, or if the applicant has had a conversation. Is there an opportunity there? Not for this particular school. It's a little bit late, but whether or not that's one of those ones that's on the list of places where we might have a city facility that could be used.
Mayor, Council, Nancy Klein, Economic Development. We have recently brought before you an agreement with the Arts Council. I'm saying the wrong name. Was First Act, but they have fully utilized the Mexican Heritage Plaza site. So they would not have the space available to make this a future Rocket Ship site for the foreseeable future.
Okay, but we have community centers and other things, other properties that might be in that category.
We can certainly look again with Parks and Rec, who administer the reuse agreements, to double-check the situation. So we can certainly work with Mr. Shanour or representatives of Rocket Ship and Launchpad to do that. Just the specific question on MHP, I think we've defined.
Okay. Councilmember Colra.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilman Campos, for raising some of the issues that I discussed last time in terms of transit and transportation flow and riders. And the campus itself has plenty of space, but I think that this neighborhood and the streets, that kind of, a lot of the arterial streets are kind of converging around this general area. And so I think it's going to be really important going into the next, the first year or two of operation, not only the requirement to have the outreach to the parents, but to see what in actuality ends up happening. And so I think the escrow account is a great idea because we may learn something that we just can't tell through traffic analysis and what have you. And I also like the idea, especially given the fact that it's a relatively heavily-traffic street, it all hours the day that the right, the ride-out, having ride-out as the only option, I believe, would make sense, and I don't think it will be extraordinarily detrimental to the operations of the school. In fact, it may make it easier, just in terms of traffic flow, to have cars continually going outright as opposed to stacking up, waiting to take left-hand turns, regardless of what time of day it is. So I'll support the motion with the amendments. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion, a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the amendments that we've discussed on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? Want to oppose? Councilmember Oliverio, motion carries. That concludes, almost, concludes that item. We have one more item to go. I think there must be some reason for Assistant Chief Eddie Garcia to sit here all afternoon. And now we're here. Item 6.1, appropriation ordinance for replacement of streetlight copper wire due to losses due to theft. That's a connection to the police department. We have a motion to approve. Hans Larson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I had just a few brief remarks and take any questions that you have, recognizing last council item before, at the end of the year. So we have, as indicated in our staff report and a recent information memo to council, we are unfortunately facing an epidemic of stolen wire from our streetlight system. Today, we have about 1,000 streetlights that are out due to wire theft. This is creating a high demand on our limited electrical resources that we have in DOT, and we're currently facing a six, about a six-month backlog. So if lights are going out, stolen wire, you're at the end of the line. It's going to take about six months to be able to keep up with that. What we're recommending is a, really outside of the budget process, a kind of emergency allocation of additional resources to help us deal with the backlog of stolen wires. We're recommending a $500,000 budget augmentation. What this will allow us to do is increase our staffing that's dealing with wire theft from two persons to six persons. We have two-persons team, an electrician and a maintenance worker that deal with repairing a wire theft. We intend to enstaff this on a temporary basis, using labor, electrician labor from the union hall. And what this would allow us to do is eliminate the backlog over the next calendar year and allow us to reduce the response to... calendar year and allow us to reduce the response time for future wire thefts to, down to somewhere in the order of one to three months. This pays for the materials, but it also is allowing us to harden the access to our streetlight system. We've had success in looking at metal locking lids for our streetlight access boxes, and so we're proposing with these resources at hotspot locations to put in locking lids at 500 locations. I want to also acknowledge the Rules Committee memo from Councilmember Licardo and Herrera from December 10th that raises really a more comprehensive look at our street lighting system and some of the issues that we're dealing with, like the LED streetlight conversion, preventative measures, enforcement, electrical staff hiring and retention and regulation. This was discussed briefly at the Rules Committee, and what we recommend is give staff a little bit of time to process all these things, and we'd come back either directly to rules or at council's option, perhaps some of these things might be referred to the TNE Committee. We'd look to respond to these in the February timeframe. That concludes my remarks, and be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Licardo.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we're all eager to move on. I'd ask the maker of the motion if they'd be willing to amend the motion to include the suggestion by Hans Larson with regard to items, the items identified in the December 10th memorandum from Councilmember Herrera and myself. I see the maker of the motion.
That's Councilmember Harrison.
Oh, pondering, okay. Yeah, it's okay.
He was packing his bags.
Yes. So, Pete, I'm not sure if you had a chance to hear Hans' remarks, but the request is to, for a friendly amendment to incorporate the memorandum dated December 10th, and I could explain very briefly to.
Yeah, I was just tuning you out, not him.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, if you wouldn't mind giving a quick explanation, because we had a short discussion at Rules, and then...
Yeah, sure. So I think the suggestion by Hans is to come back in February on all these items. Appreciate the fact that 500 locations are already identified. I'm not sure if that satisfies the 20% standard that had been identified in a prior memo. Does it, Hans?
It doesn't, but it's a start.
It's a start.
And I think we'd evaluate what we think the need is, and I think we'd come back in February with some further, you know, thoughts on that topic.
Great. So basically, we're looking for exploration, this private-public partnership, really a cost estimate on what it's going to cost to really seal and lock down some of these sites, at least in the high-theft areas, what it would take to engage with some alteration in classifications for the relevant bargaining units. And then finally, with regard to the item relating to potential licensing, really what this relates to, it's a single piece of legislation that was approved by the legislature this year but vetoed by the governor, and although state law already has several of these mandates, what it does not have, and what the governor vetoed, were requirements that payments be in something other than cash for the sellers of junk scrap metal, and that the payments be mailed to a fixed location to that seller, both of which, I like to believe, would help to reduce, mitigate some of the resale potential of the stolen copper wire. So being able to at least explore that with other cities, that's really the effort.
Yeah, I don't have a problem, as long as in the end it doesn't end up having the conflict that the city attorney mentioned could be a conflict with the state law. And then the other discussion we had at the Rules Committee was about the multipurpose lights, the LED and the wireless antennas, and I don't know if you're conflating having that put in as well, but that I think we have a lot more research to do on.
Yeah, I agree, and nobody's suggesting we jump right in.
Okay.
I think there could be opportunities here that really dovetail with everything else we're trying to do, with Chevron and everyone else.
Right, so my motion would be amended to incorporate that, and along the lines of the combination poles, the wireless light LED poles, would be making sure that we coordinate with the Silicon Valley Wireless Group, Runout of Joint Venture, and the SVRIA Wireless Group, so that we make sure that we're not preempting any other possibilities in the future.
Okay, so we have a motion with the friendly amendment. I have a question about it. I want staff to assure me that this won't screw up our work that we've already been doing with the ESCO, the Energy Service Company. We've got an RFP that's ready to go, that will ultimately result in replacement of thousands of streetlights with LEDs. We're already pressed for time and get it all done in time to qualify for the tax rebates, et cetera. I don't want to sidetrack that unintentionally here.
Mr. Mayor, it won't. We had a good meeting today with members of your staff, Chevron Energy Solutions, DOT and Public Works, on the ESCO program and the potential of some other ideas, and there's no conflict between the various efforts.
So we can just move ahead with the RFP as we've planned?
Yeah, I'm planning to come to council, I think, February 11th, with the ESCO agreement.
Okay. Councilmember Herrera.
And I just want to say that I worked with Councilmember Licardo and signed on the memo. I just think it's really important that we investigate these other opportunities. I did get a chance to see an installation of the smart light pole up, when I was up in Seattle. It's very interesting, because I think it could be a way to finance LED lighting and as well get us some of the wireless capabilities. It also, then, you know, as everyone knows, once we have an LED light, then we have the capability of being alerted when someone is attempting to steal the copper wire, messing with the light. We'll be able to utilize that alerting function if we have a smart light pole. So definitely don't want to, no pun intended, wire this for a particular company, but I think that technology is something we really need to look at. And we're hearing a lot of complaints from residents about the length of time it takes to get these outages fixed, so I really, very happy that Hans brought back this request for additional funding to get this backlog down and get these lights. It's a public safety issue, it's a neighborhood issue, so I hope you guys will support it.
We have one request to speak. Mr. Wall.
I would like to thank Councilmember Licardo and Councilmember Herrera, both formidable mayoral candidates, for that memo that they produced at Rules. They're the only two folks that have really made any steps forward to addressing this serious problem. But also, you must think of it, too, from a lack of police officers in the city. I know that you came up with this little 10% raise, but this will do nothing to stop the exodus of San Jose police officers. A couple of my memorandums on the public record produced a pay chart showing that San Jose police officers that decide to go to Santa Clara get a $39,000 and change increase in their net pay, plus they pay 10% less for their retirement. So you've really got a lot of work ahead of you to maintain the finest, because you're not going to be able to hire them as fast as you're losing them. As a matter of fact, I think we lost two of them to Santa Clara this very week. So you should look at that pay chart and realize what you've done to the San Jose Police Department and what you've done to the Fire Department as well. And to make this city really vibrant for all these businesses that you've made all sorts of perks to entice to come here, you better make this place real safe, because now you have the embarrassment of being the highest crime rate city in the state of California. I mean, that is an embarrassment. I mean, how do you say, "Come to San Jose"? I mean, are you going to provide incentives for cut-rate life insurance programs? I mean, come on. I mean, St. J, or my park, Ryland Park, is now becoming another vagrant and criminal element park, just like St. James Park. And so I have one B-cop on swings to have to deal with that park, and no, it's getting out of control. And so you better start thinking, not only going forward and making legislation tough on electrical thefts, wire thefts, but finding out a way to pay and retain competent and honorable San Jose police and firefighters. Thank you.
Concludes the public testimony. We have a motion. On the motion, all in favor? Oh, Councilmember Herrera.
Is this going to be coming back to TNE? I did, I don't know if we specifically said that, but we wanted to have that brought back to TNE.
I think that was the intention, was back to us through TNE, the usual route.
Okay, great.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion's approved. Last thing, open forum. Any requests to speak? We do. Mr. Wall.
I just wanted to report on the board meeting for the Environmental Innovation Center's Qualic B Board Meeting. You've really got an outstanding board. They're really doing a very good job with reference to the problem that they have to oversee. There is a problem, as far as looming, they may have to come to you for extra financing for change orders, because they only have about $268,000 left in the kitty. Now, with reference to the Environmental Innovation Center, and since this is the last meeting in which our honorable city manager will depart and join me into the promised land of retirement, could you just say you're sorry to Rick for having him give all that extra work for picking Applegate Johnson when I warned you not to do it? All you have to do is say, "I'm sorry, Rick, but I really don't mean it." I mean, it could be a hollow apology, but just say, "I'm sorry." Because they're overwhelmed at the attorney's office, and actually, they've done a really good job with the Construction Building Industry Association, because they got it tossed out at the appellate court and have to go to Supreme Court. So just give them a, "Rick, I'm sorry. I'm sorry I gave this extra work to you. I know you're not funded. This is an unfunded mandate, because I picked a contractor that had known financial problems, screwed up on two fire stations that they are building. We had to waive $440,000 in liquidated damages." Just say you're sorry, it'll all go away. Otherwise, we're going to have to, I'm going to have to say, "The city manager was given the chance to apologize to the city attorney, but for some reason didn't want to do it, and we're left with that gap, that rift." Thank you.
Did you want to say something?
Only, Mr. Mayor, I just simply could not let Mr. Wall have the last word at the last meeting for our city manager, so simply wanted to say thank you, city manager, on behalf of your staff. This has been an extraordinary experience. Best of luck to you.
Michael McWalters.
Hi, thank you. My name's Michael McWalters. I don't know Mr. Wall, but I do like his devil advocate, the perspective of North San Jose. I'm not here to discuss that, though. Today, in the San Jose Mercury News, there's an update on the Levi Stadium. Not one word is mentioned about the city of San Jose's participation in mitigation of traffic. City of Sunnyvale and Santa Clara have been working diligently together to deal with that. I live in El Vizo, which is a possible cut-through to Great America Parkway, and I'm wondering what the city of San Jose is going to do, or what plan they have, to get something addressed. That's it. Thank you.
That concludes the open forum, concludes our last meeting of the year, concludes the last meeting of Deb Fagoni's city manager career. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.